We call the meeting to order. We'll call it the board members.
Kathy Chandler, member.
Bob Gilbert, member.
Terry Wade, member.
Ray Kachaskin, member.
Cindy Picos, member.
Harry Odo, it's open.
Wendy Raffigan, girl.
Bill Larson, ex officio.
Okay, so it's up to Harry's turn. Review and acceptance of the October 10th meeting minutes. Actually, we have it.
I was waiting, we should just defer it to Terry.
Yeah, my favorite one is the top of page 2, I guess, or I don't know which page. Talking about 65 disciples, thirty disciples. I also thought we should leave it, but I might probably have to. Where's that? I think it's top of page.
So do we make that twelve or this?
I have something on page three. Halfway down the second paragraph, it says after discussion, CS asks if more than two sets of lights are needed, they will return two for approval of more lights. Is that?
Yeah. They got the two?
Yeah.
Oh. You didn't review them.
Oh, that's the part called the kettle booed.
No kidding.
Any other comments? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion, the weeks of the minutes as amended.
Oh, certainly.
The following paper.
Hi.
Open a public hearing that we continue for the subdivision regulations proposed changes. Article five, section eight, legs two and three.
That was Nancy. Excuse me, Ray, does anyone open the public hearing?
This is a continuation, so I'm reopening it. Recognize that Nancy White is here and that the ones. I think the last time we discussed this proposal, we had some second thoughts.
Yes, I think, I guess we're returning to the little light situation. I told you I'm going to come up with some wording. But I don't see it as a critical issue. The board just wants to leave it as it is this time. Because I guess today is the day we have to come up with it. Today is the last day we have to.
I don't think we have the time to.
Yes, you have to have it by the beginning of January.
This is for the subdivision.
Oh, for subdu-- no, you're fine with subdivision regulations, you can just continue on.
So we could continue.
You can continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
Right.
Subdivision regulations you change, so.
Right.
That being the case, I would like to have a little more time. It just kind of got whittled down to the point where it was almost meaningless, thanks to the.
Yeah.
So I wanted, I don't want to put words in there that's trying to, I mean, I think we kind of seemed to be agreeing just what we were looking for, but the wording is a little more difficult than I thought. So I just didn't have, I didn't spend any time on it.
That's okay. So we'll continue it until the December meeting?
Yes.
Okay, please. So we'll continue the public hearing till the December. Well, you said twelve.
There was also, I think, the other portion, whichever you. Dylan.
Let me wrap it all up. So next thing agenda. Site plan review application for life father like son landscaping, construction made soft shed.
I emailed that letter out to everybody.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
I got the letter, I got this, this life father like son. See, when we approved, conditionally approved this soft shed last meeting, and we had a time timeline of sixty day, I mean, thirty days. And this material wasn't received until, what, yesterday?
Yesterday, which was thirty-two days.
Thirty-two days. We've had problems in the past with these conditional approvals. The applicant, he says, oh yeah, I can get that by two days. So we give him thirty days, and in this case, in other cases, they just don't come back. In the past, the planning board has actually discussed minimizing conditional approvals because of, you get into these kind of situations. I think last meeting, I think the intent on the thirty days was to get us to the next meeting. So I would not be opposed to wavering that two days. But I would like to caution the planning board about these conditional approvals. Here we are, you know, we're thirty days later, we're going to approve it, so we're going to review it again today. We could have just not had a condition and approved it today. Anyway, those are my comments, so.
I would agree with you to some extent on that, Ray, but I think the planning board did that with the intention of allowing that construction to go ahead because of the weather season is coming on. Although I think at that. In trying to get to where you're going, we've said, let's go for another model, give you the information, and so. I think the attempt, I think we're heading in that direction. It's good to kind of keep going that way, but I think there was a purpose in this particular extension.
Well, in an application with a condition on it, it's not approved until that condition is met.
That's true.
So.
Well, that raises the interesting question, did they start at work?
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think we understood that.
We understood that that was going to be the case.
Right.
No, because the approval, when you set a condition on the approval, the approval does not take place until that condition is met. So we should not have started it until. Go ahead.
I remember telling him that he could start pouring that platform in there before the weather got too bad. And I also feel as if that he came in, to his defense, fully prepared by getting in touch with Department Environmental Services and with their plan, talking to us about the buffer, where the situation of how the tent was going to be placed. I think he went and covered all his bases, and we did give him that agreement to at least lay the foundation before the weather got bad, which it has gotten really cold, and I'm not sure if he could have laid that padded down. But he hasn't finished anything else, but we did give him approval, we talked about the tent, we talked about how the tent was going to bow out, we talked about the placement of those concrete blocks that were going to contain, and they would be sealed. I mean, I thought that meeting was very, very involved, and he came in very, very prepared with that.
Well, once you put a condition on it, if he came back the following week with that information, I would have reviewed it and signed off on it because the conditions were specific enough, then he could have started construction. That's my take.
I don't know that that was really made clear to him at the time. I'm just saying.
I think to Ray's point, it's quite important that we do make it clear, because what if DES had a change of staffing in the few months since you talked to them, and you couldn't get there right off on it? I mean, in this case, I don't think we had anything to worry about, but going forward, we should probably make sure we have a really clear procedure for anyone.
Well, the other situation is that since this was completely agreed upon verbally at the meeting, and all we really wanted the metaphor was to confirm the agreement, why wait? Put a short timeframe on it, maybe a week, and have we get the letter in, which is not a big deal, and have that signed off rather than the bottom.
Well, we could have done that.
Or we could have, but we didn't push him to do that. No, we could have done that.
Sounds like you've got an interesting dilemma. I, it, there'd be, there'd be no reason to issue a conditional approval if you can't do anything with it. You might as well wait till you issue the approval. So I think you've got to be careful. If the condition, if you can't, if we, if you approve something, and the condition is such that if that isn't met, you would have never approved it to begin with, then I completely agree with Ray. I think, I think what we're really asking here is administrative details, which have nothing to do with the terms of, you know, whether you'd approve it or not approve it. And, and, but I'm not sure we should, I think when you say approved, you've approved it. You can put all the conditions down you want, but in reality, what's going to happen is they're going to start, and then what recourse do you have if they don't meet one of the conditions? What are you going to do, tell them to stop and remove what they've already done? We've never done that, you know, that's, that's ridiculous, that's, well, it'd be unusual if we took that step. Let's put it that way.
Well, I think these conditions were to capture the information so that the town would have a record.
Right. I don't know how to put a require, I guess we said that maybe instead of a condition of approval, we ought to say, in addition, there is a requirement that you submit the following documentation, but not tie it to the approval. Because if it is tied to the approval and you don't want it starting to build, I completely agree with you, you know, why in the world are we approving them? If you're going to let them start, if you're going to let them start, I think you ought to list it as, the following administrative requirements are also.
What if they never?
You know, I don't know, we'd have to go back, I, you know, maybe we could.
You can issue a cease and desist, and that's why we, I think that's why they made it.
You can make it stop.
But, but when, when you made that a condition of the approval, I thought all you were doing was memorializing what was said, like, as Harry pointed out, what was said in the meeting, and all you wanted was to have it in the record, so you asked him to put it in letter form. But I thought all of those things had been met, and that's why you were approving it, and all you wanted was the letter within thirty days. That's, when I left the meeting, and I think that's the way, when Dave left the meeting, that's the way he left it, that he could, he was approved and he could move forward, but you just wanted the document to put basically with the minutes that he had done those things that he sent to you at the meeting. Did I miss something in the meeting? Otherwise, we would have, we would have given him a cease and desist, that if, if there was something he didn't do yet that he needed to do, then, then Chris could have shut him down, but, but I didn't think there was anything outstanding when I left the meeting.
I think Ray's probably correct in the way he's looking at it, but from my point of view, just not being that familiar with all the standards and stuff like that, I left maybe assuming that he was going to go up and put that stuff out.
Well, with all the training sessions I've been to, you know, to me, it was clear, any conditional approval, it's approved on a condition that they've met.
Well, the next time, we won't let him start without getting the letter. I mean, we could have easily told him, oh, you can't do anything until we get that letter in.
Well, I think we all have to agree that that's, that's what we mean when we have a conditional approval. That's why we've got in trouble with these conditional approvals in the past. And every, you know, the applicant always comes in, here's my, here's my application, and I get the bulldozer coming to my own. I think we just need to make it clear, I don't think it was made clear at the meeting that he shouldn't start. Quite the contrary, I didn't take it that way.
Exactly. Quite the contrary.
It's a lesson learned.
Yeah, it's a.
Yeah, I guess that's my point.
That's the thing going forward, I think that the planning board needs to be really much more, much more strict about the conditions. And that needs to be understood, it needs to be in the minutes, it needs to be understood that either he doesn't pour the slab until, until he's met the conditions, or we give him a week, you know, I mean, I just think that we need to come to it.
For practical example, if, if he can't, if we told him that he couldn't pour the slab until he came in with the letter, it wouldn't have been any of that good.
Yeah, exactly, I'm sure.
I would suggest that we add a definition. If we can agree on what conditional approval means, we then ought to put it in a common listed definition. So there's no misunderstanding going forward. A conditional approval means you do not start until that condition has been satisfied to what? The, to the satisfaction of the chairman of the board, or, you know?
I always thought there was a legal issue, I mean.
I don't know.
That's what conditional approval meant.
I think just putting it in the motion that just says, these conditions must be met before construction begins, would be fine. You know, like I said, I walked away thinking that he was approved, and all he had to do was to give you a letter. That's, and we would have stopped him the next day if, if you wanted that letter first, and like Harry said, he would have had it there that day because he wanted to get started.
It's my fault.
It's my fault. No problem.
No, because, you know, my recollection was that he said, oh yeah, I can get that in no time.
I can get that in no time, yeah.
And then I went, I went away for the following week, and I just assumed that he came in with the information and Terry signed off on it, because I left the message that Terry could sign off on it.
Okay.
And I just assumed that that happened.
I'll just tell Sharon that when we have conditions, they've got to all be met, or Chris is to just shut them down, and that's fine.
And I, and I think the other thing that comes out of this is not the thirty days, but do it to a next meeting or some sort of thing.
Yeah.
So that we don't get into this two day.
Thirty day, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's the other thing, that if you put a time limit on it, and you want us to stop them at the end of that time limit, then we can, we can put that in the ticker file and we can stop it if they haven't met the conditions. A cease and desist will just put them on hold until you guys meet again and decide what to do with it.
But I have a question. If, if somebody's given a condition, conditional, go ahead, and they have to have that letter, and they come in ahead of the meeting, you know, the next meeting, because it's imperative that they get this thing going.
Yeah.
Do we still have that person wait till that following meeting, or do we get a call?
Well, that's up to the board, because that's what you have a chairman for.
No, what's, what's happened in the past, if we've had some of these smaller, illustrative things, and the applicant comes in within a week or so, I will go over there and look at it, and if it meets, you know, if it's clear of what we're looking for, and he's met that, I'll just sign off on it, and then it's, then the condition is clear. And that's the way I interpreted conditional.
On the, if you're going to put definitions of conditions, it doesn't just apply to construction, right? You can have conditions of site plan.
Well, there's two types of conditions, I, I always stumble into two types, what are they?
Condition subsequent and condition precedent. But those are, those are very legal, legalistic conditions, and, you know, anytime we've done that, a long time ago, it required everybody to go to the legal book. But as an applicant, I can tell you that I think conditional approvals are important, because it might be something as simple as an engineering stamp that's, and, you know, you know, time, you're always up against a wall of timelines, sorry. Thing that Ray or anybody designated can look at and say, yeah, we got the stamp. So those kinds of approvals, I think, are, are important, as long as they're just administrative.
But you wouldn't start construction till that stamp arrived?
It would be my opinion that you don't have approval until you fulfill the condition. I agree with you, right?
That's always been my understanding, and.
I think that thing a month ago was confusing, however. There was some conditions to whether he really needed a site plan approval, and you could pour the concrete because you wouldn't need site plan approval. You know, I think it was a confusing.
Because in the case of a subdivision, the requirement is for a Mylar, so that the Mylar can be registered, and usually the Mylar is never provided at the, at the meeting, because it's an expensive proposition to get a Mylar made, and the applicant usually wants to make sure that everything is, is okay before he gets that Mylar. So we always have a condition that when we receive the Mylar, or stamp, that it's the Mylar, as soon as that Mylar shows up, I sign it and it's approved. But he wouldn't stop construction until that Mylar was in house. And I guess that's, that was my, that's always the way I interpreted, that's the way my training is. I don't know, any clarification needed?
I think, I think, I think you could use a definition. Either, either a definition, or every time you write a motion, you're going to have to write it down.
They include it.
Yeah, they include it as part of the motion, otherwise you run the risk of, remember, all these people won't be here, and the same thing will happen again at all.
I think it should be in the motion so that it's clear.
That's fine.
No, these are lessons learned.
You want to read the definitions of conditions precedent and subsequent? Just for kicks? A condition precedent, which I think is what we're talking about now, those conditions that must be fulfilled before the board may give final approval to the application. That's, that's the general thing. Conditions subsequent, those conditions dealing with restrictions on the use of the property or safeguards that must be observed during the development of the parcel, or once the project is in use. I'm not sure what that means, but that's the definition of it. Yeah, it'd sound like, you know, clarifying uses of, you know, you can, you can use it for this, but not for that, that kind of stuff.
Drainage plan has to work correctly, that may have been something that's a condition subsequent. So you're approving a conditional on the drainage system working properly.
Yeah.
Something like that. And then you would have to come back if the, you know, if the chairman or, or the code enforcement officer had a problem with what was going on out there, then they could come back to the board to go over that condition. Okay. Well, just call it condition precedent in your, in your motion, that's defined in our, in our regulations, and we'll keep it from starting before.
And we just have to spell it out.
Yep. But you've got the definition in there, as Bill was pointing out, at least it's defined.
Having deepness to death, there is one more thing that is pertaining to this application. And that is that the application that came in showed and described the walls that the tent would be sitting on as concrete blocks. I was informed by Dave that you had also, I hadn't gone to see it, I don't know if it's in place yet, but he said he was changing that to cast in place foundation, cast in place wall, yeah, poured in place as opposed to the blocks. I don't think there's any problem with that, I don't have a problem with it, but probably should just be noted someplace in our approval that, that the applicant indicated that the wall would be cast in place concrete as opposed to blocks, just so that it shows that he did. I mean, he has not fallen, though they don't say here on the. Well, I'd be content, yeah. Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that the board recognizes that the block, although the wall might be in place, cast in place or blocked, it's satisfactory. If it is, then we don't want to speak to everybody.
Cast in place means actually poured here?
It's like a poured foundation.
Poured foundation, so it'd probably be more secure than a block? Well.
Cast secure and probably less after a week, maybe.
Though it would still be the ceiling, and we still pour it out there.
Well.
So he did say they were going to, he was going to seal the inside of those blocks. So we would still want to make sure that the ceiling is poured.
Yeah, well, I don't think that, it's said that he wasn't going to seal it. I think it was just that it was going to be concrete instead of block. I don't, I don't think that the design is building for it.
Well, we could mention it in passing. I know, we see it.
Well, but I, I think that the building inspector should just send you a letter that says it was done, poured in place. It's a, it's really a building inspector issue, I think, more than, and if it goes significantly outside of what you approved, then he can say, no, you can't do that to the developer, and then come back to you and ask, because it would be materially different. But he didn't change the footprint of the pad or, or anything else that I'm aware of, so why would that not be a building inspector thing? And just follow up with you that he approved it. And then that goes into the record with, with your approval. File.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I think, I think the whole intent of these subdivision regulations is to get documentation for the town to know what's going on. So any, any kind of documentation, you know, in the letter from the building inspector.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll have Chris submit a letter to you for the next meeting that details that change, and then you'll have it in the file. And then if Chris feels that it's a material difference, or the footprint changes, or something else, then he would not allow that to happen, and then he would bring it back to you.
And that would satisfy the town's record keeping.
Record keeping, yeah. Okay.
Do you have any action in this?
Have you signed on it?
No, I haven't.
I think it's just a matter of Ray signing off, I don't think.
No, Ray should, if, my only question was, what were you going to do with the thirty-two days versus the thirty days? I thought that, that that should be in the record that you were okay with that, and then Ray could sign off on the.
So this should be a motion that we accept.
Yeah.
Or grant the extension to thirty-two days instead of thirty.
No, just accept. No, we can waive, waive the two days. I mentioned that because if we're going to put a time limit on it, I think from now on, it should be enough time to get us to the next meeting, you know, day by day, or know exactly when the next meeting is.
If we have next meeting day, just put the date of the meeting.
Exactly, yeah. So that it gets us to the next meeting.
Okay, then I would move that we give final approval to the application of life father, life son.
of like father, like son landscaping for construction of the salt shed based on this. I guess that's it. Let's give it to you. Two. Oh.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? Paul and Taylor? Next, the new business. The Nygrush Bearaclaw merger. March, I think you can present that.
Yep. RSA 67439A allows for a voluntary merger of two lots into one lot if they're both owned by the same person. So the Bearaclaws, Bearaclaw and Nygrush own, as you know, the parcel that we've been going around and around out on West Branch Road, which they subdivided, didn't think they subdivided. We never recorded the plan. Then we realized that we hadn't recorded the plan. So we signed it and recorded it. They didn't want it recorded because they're marketing it as a single lot. So the RSA allows them to take those two lots and combine them into one. And this is the application that's in the subdivision regulations. And basically, this is an informational thing. It does not take approval or a public hearing for the board to do this. It's an informational thing that, that is, I guess, acknowledged by the board. The chairman signs it, we record it, and it goes back to being one lot. So David Britton is okay, you know, because his lot had been affected by it. We're basically putting everything back to the way it was originally. So Britton gets his little piece of land back and Bonnie and Alvin put their lot back to one lot.
Does the tax map get updated?
Yeah, the tax map will be updated once, once we record that, which quite frankly, the tax map was never changed.
It doesn't.
Because it wasn't, there were no deeds done. So there was only the plan that was recorded. Okay? So that document does say that deeds are required to be shown where they're combined back into one. But because they were never recorded to subdivide it, there are no deeds existing right now. So if the board could just acknowledge that you have that and allow it to go back.
That was RSA what?
Any questions?
So are we, are we doing this for, just for the clarification or acknowledgement that, that really nothing has happened?
There is, there, right now, if, if Bonnie and Alvin tried to sell their land, there is a plan in the registry when you do a title search. There's a plan at the registry that shows a subdivision that there are no deeds for.
Got it.
Okay? So this voluntary merger will be also recorded at the registry showing those lots being put back together. That will clear up everything as far as the title search is concerned.
Now, is one of the ramifications that they are not to offer for sale now?
They can, that's correct. They, they would not be able to offer two lots.
They could probably discuss that it's possible to do this, but they may not formally offer.
Two lots.
Two lots.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. And they, and we've talked, I talked about that with Bonnie and Alvin.
And there's a Mylar that would get.
There is a Mylar, if you recall, I think John March did a Mylar which just put everything back together. So this, this document and the Mylar will be recorded and it won't affect our tax maps because they were never changed. Their tax bills were never changed to two lots. Because we can't change anything until we get a deed.
So I'd sign off on the Mylar.
You would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need a motion because we approved, you subdivided it. So now we have to approve.
Your motion would be to acknowledge the, the voluntary merger and, and to have the chairman sign it and record it and approve it.
Is it approval or is it?
What is, I think the form.
He's saying it's automatic.
It's automatic.
I don't even think you technically need a motion, do you?
No, I, I don't think that you do. I, I think if you're, if you want to have a motion to just acknowledge it so it's in the records, there's no approval from the way I read the statute and our form. It's not an approval by the.
A Ray's signature would be an acknowledgement of that.
Yeah, yep. I mean, you're going to be in the minutes as having discussed it anyway, so.
Okay.
You should be fine.
The one thing that didn't make it on the agenda on the new business is the zoning changes. November is the time for the planning board to discuss or propose any.
It's under number eight committee ordinance. Zoning ordinance, that's what she meant by that.
Okay. Okay, well, we have any communications this night. And so we're going to the zoning changes. This is just time, you know, our timetable is such that, our timetable is such that we have to. Thank you.
Off-camera instructions.
Just a reminder for me to speak. Assuming you can hear me. Anyway, it's that time of the year to think about any zoning changes. We have a timetable before the public meeting in March. And this would be the time to discuss any changes we want to make to zoning. Anybody have any zoning changes that they would propose? Well, without that, we do, we had a workshop presentation on the core development. And during that time, some questions were asked about our zoning with clarification. And I think we all have that list in front of us. Has everybody had a chance to look at?
Bill, do you have that?
I have seen it.
Have you seen it?
All right.
Do you want me to make copies? Does somebody have one here or no? Go make it.
Yeah, actually, Mark, do we have Bonnie making copies for the transportation stuff that we want to talk about?
I, I didn't make copies yet. I wasn't sure if that's what you want to present or is it, you're okay with that? All right. Be right back.
Yeah. It's also kind of above my head.
Who more or less wrote it? Mark.
Yeah, we need to stack together and brainstorm what we're going to read.
Did everybody attend that workshop or get a briefing after? So we are all familiar with that workshop?
Yes.
Yeah, we had to call it, it was called a workshop.
I have one.
You must have left it.
Yeah, I just made a copy.
Testing, testing.
Has to make up for no comments on the notice.
I have one, honestly. I kept it and I looked at it. I actually looked at it. It might be nice.
Probably not because it's homework. Just have to trust it.
I think at least the years. So I figured the town has. Oh, I had a book that.
But I've reworked it in the past.
Because of the path rack.
I mean, it, it is nice that someone can keep it at least like three years. We've heard that a few times. I don't keep it.
Don't can address it. That's from there.
I just, I just need to clarify, this doesn't sound right. I want to make sure that it got put down the way you wanted it. Says need to confirm 20% requirement seems close. Need 6.7 acres of open space for all three parcels, A, B, C. And then it says open space excludes all areas not used for parking roads and buildings. That's wrong.
That's wrong. It should be used, right?
Right, yeah. And I think the issue relative to the parking space, the conceptual plan that you looked at, the open space exceeds the requirement. I think what, one of the things we need to do is, is there an ability to look at that whole parcel of land as one when it comes to open space calculations? For example, if the first thing you did was built and dedicated the, the town green, then probably the other buildings wouldn't stand on their own as separate, as separate lots.
Taking up an awful lot of.
Right. So I don't know whether, you know, you say every phase, when combined with the previous phase or the previous lots in this zone within this area must, when put together, must meet or exceed the open space calculation. But I think that's an important consideration as you go forward and you want to have a phased project. And I think we're all cognizant of the fact that a plan like that doesn't just drop out of the sky and get done overnight. It's definitely a phased project. And I'm sympathetic to the fact that anything that is approved needs to meet the open space requirements. But you, you know, the ability to look at the, all of that land together, I think, is, is important from that point of view.
The comments we put, A, B, and C, that was the areas on that.
Those were the, we didn't draw any lot lines.
Right.
Those were the, how we designated some of those lodges in that area.
I, I just don't remember what A was or B. Was A the?
I don't remember. I don't know.
Wasn't it the gondola and parking in the first area?
All of those were, had letters on them.
Yeah, they had letters.
A, B, C, and D.
Do you think that that copy of that plan should have been submitted with these changes that were requested? So for reference standpoint?
I think, I think, I think the big question is, is when and how does that plan get rolled out and become a, a public document? I think some of these changes that we're, that we're going to discuss are issues that need to be addressed irrespective of having a plan to refer to. You know, it would be nice if there was a confirmation that that plan reflects the, what's in the master plan maybe. And if, if, I have no problem making it a public document and rolling it out. I don't want, what I don't want is to say, oh, here are these great plans. Yeah, well, when's something going to happen? You know, I, I, I don't want a whole bunch of hoopla around the fact that this plan is something that's about to get implemented. Maybe pieces of it will be, but it's, it's more a, a working document that we can use as we look at these changes and so on. So I guess the short answer is, I'd be happy to submit it. The question I, I think that maybe you folks ought to think about is, do we put it on the wall? Do we put it in a file? Do we, do we host another public, do we host a public meeting?
Well, I just, from a standpoint of looking at, you know, A, B, and C on that page and then going over to the last page, they're again referring to C, D, and H and of J. It's like, if we had maybe one copy of it so that we here in the planning board could look at it and understand apples to apples.
Right. The, the, it's the issues more than the plan and you're welcome to have, have a plan. But you know, it's that open space issue which we just discussed about. It's, it's the location of parking. The zoning says all the parking's got to be within 300 feet. You know, that's not the case today with a lot of the parking. And if you're looking at a phased development, so you're pushing back when you actually have to build structured parking, you know, that rule is probably going to get violated more. And, you know, as, as they said at that meeting, how far it is really has a lot to do with how pleasant the walk is from where you're parking to where you're trying to go, which is an issue. The, that, the section that tells you that rule says you can park on separate lots, but they shall be held under unified ownership or control. I read that. I don't know what that means, you know. It might be important to talk about if it is on a separate lot and it is, no matter what the difference is, you know, what are the controls for the use of, of that lot? There's the size of spaces for parking, which I think is an immediate way to substantially increase surface parking, you know. Does, does the planning board think that some of the parking spaces or some of the parking spaces serving certain uses can be smaller? We always, in these phased developments, we're always looking at what's, the concept that's being presented now. And, and I know you have, we have to start somewhere. Try to understand the, the context of what's being presented. And I understand that things are going to change over time as well. But we're making decisions now without having, I always have a problem with something and said, and saying, all right, this is it. And now we make decisions based on what we see, the impact to the town and all of that. But we seem to be constantly asked to look at something and make decisions and they're going to change in the future. And we're always back here and we're always stuck in the muddy. That's my interpretation of. That's my interpretation of all of this phasing stuff. And I mean, I don't have solutions. I'm just saying that it seems that things can change dramatically. We've made the decisions already, so. I like making decisions on what I see in front of me and what is, rather than what might be. But maybe that's not possible.
Well, it's, I don't think it is possible. I mean, that's one of the dilemmas, as Bill said. I mean, I looked at that change and I don't look, you know, and there's a lot of little details where it doesn't agree with the current zoning. But that's taking a specific set of drawings and matching them up against them. At the heart of it though, of what they presented to me, was a real conceptual change for the center of town. And the conceptual change dealt with that we're going to dramatically increase parking density by building garages to stack cars up. And in return, get open space that we can either leave as open space or becomes developable land. That is, to me, that's the heart of what they're proposing to do. And somehow, to me, that's the thing that's attractive or unattractive about it. I mean, because it's really talking about taking density up in the center of town. And I think that we somehow need to get a sense of, is the town committed to doing this? Because I believe that, from looking at that, that would never happen. For that plan to happen, it's going to take the concerted effort of the town, private developers, and the ski mountain, all agreeing that conceptually, we want to move in this direction. And as Bill said, most likely, it's going to take somebody with money, a real amount of money, buying out all those entities and interests, you know, in order to make it happen. And that's just not going to happen on its own. Because I believe the town has got a substantial, is going to have to bear a substantial, not only cost, but commitment to make it happen. You know, this is literally, it becomes one of these public-private partnerships. And I, and if we want to make something like that happen, it's because we're going to work with the other entities to figure out a way to find someone with deep enough pockets to come in and make it happen. It isn't just going to happen because magically somebody walks in who's got that kind of money. It's just not going to happen. That's my opinion. Yeah. I mean, and I think for that to happen, the town has got to realize that, you know, it goes back to the transportation study. Somebody's got to take a look. What, what kinds of incentives are there out there? Is there public money to help defer the cost of building some of those things? I mean, that was a key question because for the town to commit to do anything like that, you know, it's got to know, do we have to bear all its expense on our own? Because I believe there's going to be some sizable expense involved. And it's first of all, getting the town committed, is that what they want? Do they want to see something like that happen? And then you deal with all the regulations. I think it's way premature to try to change any of the zoning, in my opinion.
If somebody came in with a lot of money, that they would have their own ideas on what they want to do.
Oh, absolutely. So what the buildings would look like, where they'd be situated, they'd change. But the core concept, which is, let's increase density, you know, parking density, because a developer is not likely to bear 100% of the expense of building those garages. You know, that's just not likely to happen. It's going to take, it's going to take some concerted effort. So to me, you know, is conceptually something like that attractive? And if it is, what are we going to do to start to move in that direction?
Because we did.
It's not in the detail.
Unfortunately, the mountain wasn't there to hear their plots on.
No, and I likewise believe that if a developer is going to want, it seems to me to go the next step, he's going to want control of the mountain and control of the land in the valley. They're not going to do it as separate pieces. Right? It's, I mean, it's pretty tough.
Over and over again in that presentation, you saw that it was going to require collaboration. Collaboration of the landowner, the ski area, and the town. And I don't think there's any question about that. You won't be successful without having that. I really see maybe three steps, you know, talking about what Bill does. One, are the benefits to the community great enough so conceptually structured parking is a good thing? You get more open space, you get more efficient space, you get underground space, drainage becomes better, and you get rid of ugly parking lots. So is that what the community wants to embrace? Very, very important question. Probably a question that goes beyond the people in this room. That's something for you to consider. The whole, the whole concept about how does that structured parking get financed? That's a really good question. It's kind of a separate issue. Because from the little work I've done, there's a whole array of possible ways it can get done, whether it's with grants, or TIF financing, or special tax districts, or whatever. And certainly, I would not expect the town to stand up right now and say, yeah, we're willing to commit millions and millions of dollars to structured parking. You know, that, once you decide, yeah, that's a, that's a good concept, as that becomes more real, then I think collectively, we all have to look at, at what those private partnership scenarios are that work for everybody. And I don't know, I'm not intimately familiar with it, and I don't think any of us know what the answers are. The third thing about zoning changes is, I think there's definitely some zoning changes that can be addressed immediately. And I think there's zoning changes that will probably get addressed after you get your, this transportation, parking, pedestrianization study done. You know, that'll give you some definitive information and some objective data. But I, since that meeting, I did take the time and I went through and superficially read all the zoning regulations, particularly as they relate to this zone and all the subdivision regulations in this. You know, I think it would be, certainly be helpful if the town started to address some of those issues that are genuine issues. And I think that if, one of the things that I think would be really helpful is if the white knight arrives, whenever, that he saw that there was a level of cooperation between the three entities, or that the town was interested in removing barriers that might exist. But that goes a long ways towards having a capable and sophisticated developer wanting to do business in this town.
Nothing jumped out at me that zoning precludes right now.
It's our opinion that everything that you saw on that worksheet complies with zoning. That what is, the difficult areas are the gray areas. Okay? If we came in and wanted to put in that green and as part of the phasing, just moved the parking back, you know, another 200 feet maybe, or whatever the depth is, you know, can I say, well, geez, you've approved all this other parking because it's outside the 300-foot rule. Will you do that? Will you do it again? Well, you know, in reality, I'm not sure if you can. You've got to go to the ZVA. You know, that's not particularly an appealing process. So should that zoning issue relative to the 300-foot level or issue be addressed now? I'd like to think that possibly that can be addressed, with or without a specific plan. You know, the size of parking spaces, you know, does, for lodges and for retail, is that something you could address now? You know, if you go to, a large percentage of the cars are smaller than they were when all the parking spaces were 10 feet wide and 20 feet long. Does it make sense to say, for certain uses, the parking, 50% of the parking spaces can be smaller? Or, you know, is that something you want to look at?
I said, it's in, um, is in suburbans trying to park.
Well, you know, that's why I don't think all of them should be. But, you know, you do a certain percentage. We've all been in places that has parking spaces for smaller cars and parking spaces for bigger cars. And if you do that, all your parking places need to be striped. And your zoning also says all your parking places, all your parking areas need to be paved. That's another zoning ordinance that has never been enforced. Well, you can't go out and stripe gravel, you know. It doesn't work very well, or it doesn't last very long. So, you know, is that an area that needs to be addressed? The other thing that we keep having trouble getting to conclusion on is the difference between town roads and definitions of town roads, accessways and driveways. You know, and I'm not sure if I know what the difference is between the two of those things. I've spoken to Chris Hodges about it. Chris says, I don't care what you call them, as long as they meet town standards for fire and safety reasons. And if they, we can get there when we need to. That's the concern. You know, if the planning board agrees with that, it would be great to try to iron out those definitions a little bit. And those definitions are probably easier to iron out in this zone because this zone already provides for subs, it's either zero setback or five or six-foot setback as a retail exception. That's for building this primary retail. Can you expand that to lodging facilities in this zone? Because then if you do, this right-of-way width issue kind of goes away. So, you know, why is it there? And just dealing with that whole driveway, accessway, street issue, which we collectively have done a number of times, is always, what's it say? What's it mean? Why are we doing it this way? You know, the result is the same. The road is built to town standards and built even wider than the accessways that are required in the zoning. So those are issues that I think can be addressed sooner rather than later. But that's, that depends up to you.
So I'm back to again, I think the planning board needs to wrestle with was that concept, something they see that's consistent with the master plan? And if so, do they choose to embrace it? And try to make something like that happen, or no, let's just, you know, or some other vision. I mean, and to me, it's not about the placement or number of buildings. I mean, it's really taking that, what's inside that ring road and trying to change the concept of what it is.
Shouldn't this be a town-wide decision?
Yeah, but it should be, and it obviously have to be. But someone's going to have to figure out a way to present it to the town. And that probably should be the planning board. You know, it should start with the planning board wrestles with it and says, I like it, I don't like it, you know. And then we, you know, and then the town wrestles with it, and I like it or don't like it. And it's trying to identify what are the first couple of steps that we need to do now in order to get this rolling? I think one of them is, you know, I personally think if you want to get it rolling, you really do need to get someone who's knowledgeable in parking and transportation to come in and take a look at the multiple of issues. And not from the standpoint of laying out lines, but from the standpoint of looking at it and saying, is it feasible to build in a small town like this, you know, high-density parking? Does it reasonably cost? Where does the money come from? You know, those are a set of issues. The gondola. Is the gondola even remotely feasible, or is it going to be, is it always going to be a bus transportation network? You know, that's maybe just goes, doesn't go to all the condos, just goes from town square out. I mean, you know, somebody got to do a little more work to figure out, rather than draw them on a piece of paper, you know, is this even, you know, how would we connect all these things? But it starts with, I think, the town saying, yeah, we'll put up the money to at least explore this a little bit further.
Well, why don't you hand out that RFP information when you talk about that? Because we're kind of, I think that ties in with what Bill just said is.
I was just going to say the same thing, Mark. I think it's interesting that we have this transportation, working on transportation and parking in town, when this whole concept is being presented to the planning board. And I think that everything went kind of hand in hand, and I think that's, that's a, that's great. I mean, I think that's.
What if, what if the, I mean, we can review this RFP because I'd like to get the RFP out.
Yes, yes.
And there's a timeline on there that I think if we're going to put any money into the 2014 budget, we kind of have to stick to this, you know, that timeline. The goal of this is not to select a firm necessarily. It's to get the budget numbers and get a sense of how much is this going to be so that we can put something realistic into the town meeting warrant. And we have an explanation of what we're trying to accomplish so that we don't run into the issue that we ran into last year. And I think a workshop, once we get this out, there would be a couple of workshops. Bill's idea of getting your sense of whether or not the master plan that was presented is what you want to do, you could, you can have a meeting just to discuss that, just hash that out. Then if you got steps one and two, and the transportation plan is step one, what's the, what's the next step? When does that happen? Does it have to happen in '14? Does it happen, town meeting in '15, whatever? But I think that would, that would be a good place to start.
And yes, we all have some backgrounds. We've been working on trying to pull together some information for this. Nancy and I sent in with Mark last Friday. So we apologize for last minute hanging out without some preview time, but Mark was still able to pull it together just a couple of days ago. And just to get our timeline going so we can have something to present to town.
I think that, I think that what Bill is saying, that the planning board needs to, needs to have a consensus that we feel that this, that the concept of what has been presented is consistent with the master plan and is what the planning board, what we agree with, or that we agree with the whole concept and how it applies to the, to the master plan and to the future development in the town. You know, it is something that we agree with. If that is so, I think that we then need to, we need to have, you know, we need to create a plan of how this is going to be broken out to the town. And part of it is this, is the parking and transportation. That's probably one of the very first things we need to do. But I think that, I think that we shouldn't leave this meeting without coming to a consensus that, you know, yes, this is a concept that we agree with, you know. And then we need to figure out how we're going to, you know, or fill, you know, if it's going to present to the town. You know, what are some of the steps and how will the planning board help with that at the town meeting? Because we know what happened in the last town meeting. And I think that's really a key thing, is that we as the planning board need to come to that town meeting with a, with a presentation that we can tell, that will be, you know, so that we are really well-prepared and marked to present a, present a program that will work.
You know, Bill, at the end of that meeting, I mean, I do think it's up to us to decide, you know, from our point of view, how well it matches up with the master plan. But I have asked your folks, because they kept on talking about benefits of community, and you mentioned that too. you mentioned that too, if they had done any work quantifying how this had benefited any other communities, this sort of development for resort communities. And I was just wondering if anyone on your team was working on any sort of numbers, you know, looking at other examples to kind of support the case in our case?
That was a really good comment. And we, that was one of the things we took away from that meeting was your, was your comments on that, a economic impact statement or a study or something, not only of how, how does this affect the town positively? The, the flip side of that is what happens to the town if you don't do this? You know, those are kind of two sides to the same coin. We've got a name of a consultant who, who does that kind of work. And we're trying to figure out what kind of information they need and how much it's gonna cost. That's certainly not in the scope of work of, of what you folks looked at a couple of weeks ago. But we're gathering information on that and, and, you know, we will, we will move to, to do some studies. How much money we can commit to doing that, I'm not sure. But I think we recognize that that's an important part of the problem.
Also, to giant current under, under everything this is that this rising tide all boats. And I'm just wondering how, how high does the tide rise? You know, how high has it risen for anyone else? Anyway, if no one can answer that, I think that we'll be left at, at another town meeting going, you know, kind of before.
Well, you forget...
Something, it doesn't have to be as fancy as maybe you're imagining it.
Right.
I think you can do the numbers, you can figure them out pretty easily. I mean, i- i- if, if, if what I would guess that what they proposed, if that ever got built, is 20 to 50 million dollars in new ratables. So, just take that number. So, that's 200?
Way more bigger than that, way bigger than that.
Well, so that's, that's a half a million dollars a year in taxes. That's a half a million dollars in taxes. Forget about whether any other property in the town even changed one cent. Just the addition of those items is half a million dollars in taxes. It's, 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 so I'm saying, what are, you know, you can do some pretty quick order magnitude numbers.
Well, yeah, we can, we can definitely do that if we get a sense.
Yeah.
If it's 50 million, 100 million, 100, you know, if it's 100 million dollars, that's gonna increase the value of our town, like Bill says, without any changes to other properties by 33%.
Right, huge number, big numbers.
So, I mean, we're, we're a pretty small community. So, these large developments will have a big impact. Now, how much more is it gonna cost?
I was just gonna say the budget's gonna increase as well. So, you can't just use a number and you gotta take the other numbers.
No, no. Obviously, there's some costs, but we can, we can help figure that out.
And directionally, you know, that's why, you know, but I think you do have to deal with some vagaries here in the beginning because you can't do all the work. Because again, what's gonna get built is maybe, maybe you can start with a concept such as that. What actually gets built, I, I'd be very much surprised if it looks anything like those buildings. I mean, they'll be different. But there are some really fundamental questions because if you're gonna go to high-density parking from the standpoint of being able to free up land in that course intersection, then you need to think about how do you write the zoning regulations so that not only allows, but it, it essentially requires high-density parking? You know? You know, you don't want to get down that road and then somebody walk in and say, "Well, I want to develop and I'm gonna put parking lots out there." You're gonna say, "No, no, no, no. In this area now, we're not gonna do it." You know, we're committed now to going down a whole different track other than that." You know, but I think there are a million questions that have to be answered. But it's gonna be tough to get them all. I mean, I think you start with bits and pieces. I think the most, I think I agree with Bill that the single most important thing is, is the, you know, would the, it, does a developer get a sense that the town is willing to work with them or that the town is gonna be a pain in the neck? And I, I, I think there we could find out whether the town thinks, which way they want to go. Do they want to keep the old waterville? And I think you're, and I don't make light of that. I think a lot of people say, "I don't, we don't need any of this. You know, just continue on the way we're on."
See, so now you're talking about the voters. And I always, I, when I was listening to Bill, I was thinking, "Planning board's likely." But you're...
It's both. Starts with the planning board, I think, but ultimately you're gonna do the voters.
Our responsibility is...
You're gonna need, in order just to do the transportation study, you're gonna have to convince people, why is it worthwhile to spend, to start spending some money, answer some of these questions? To do that, my opinion is you're gonna have to give them some reason. Well, I think the last time he said, "Well, we're not just gonna do it because we trust you." But I'm convinced if you went in and showed a concept similar to what he had and said, "This is what it might look like. Now, we need to start working on this." And to do that, the first thing we think is transportation study, probably gonna cost this amount of money. And, and then they've got something to vote on. You know, they can say, "Matt, no." Or they can say, "Yeah, okay."
But I, I do think that showing, here's the potential futures, one if we don't do it, one if we do, I think it's powerful because I think it's, I think it's, you know, you're getting it upside the reality when it's concrete.
Right.
Also, the, the faces should be shown that this is the most important, you know, phase A is one of the most important things to start, not throwing the whole helmet at them, but showing them this is the potential, but this is what we're focusing on at the present time.
Oh, yeah. And more so.
Yeah, I think if we presented the whole thing as a whole, I think the town would shut down.
There'd be too many...
It would be too much.
One other comment is, you know, in my, in my time here in Waterville Valley, that's the second master plan I've seen presented by a water company. The last one was that guy from Telly Wright with the beard at the conference center. And there was a lot done there or whatever. And I don't know anything ever came about out of that. I mean, to be quite honest with you, and I, I won't, I won't make a comment, but I, I'm, I'm wondering how that is, if it's still in the memory of some people. I mean, that wasn't a really, it didn't come off too well.
So, you're wondering how to overcome those...
Yeah, I think there might be some of that coming into this. Although I think this is more detailed, this makes, this makes a little bit of sense. And I understand all, you know, that, that concept and whether people want it or not is another issue. But, so I do think this is way different than that last one.
The, the biggest, the biggest underlying criteria between the planning that was, that's done now is at that point in time, the, the, the ski area of master plan boundary still included Snow's Mountain. The ski area still had a whole bunch of rights on our land across Snow, for Snow's Mountain to put lifts up the area where Moose Run is. And so, we spent a lot of time and a lot of money trying to figure out, how would you actually accommodate that? You know, in hindsight, that was a huge waste of money on our part because, A, it never happened. And if I was a little bit smarter than I was, I should have been able to figure out that that probably wasn't gonna happen. But, but there were easements that have, that were in place that have all expired now that, that drove a lot of that, that planning effort. You know, I think this one is a lot more practical. And I, you know, and what Bill's saying is true. Does the town want to look at a more big, ugly surface parking lots? Or do you want to start creating attractive public spaces, putting this parking underground and creating a community that is much more livable and attractive and inviting? That, that's, that's the, that's the, the big aesthetic question that needs to be answered.
One of the things that hasn't really been thought about is that I, I think it's a good idea to have an overall master plan like that so that people can see at least one of the possibilities of what's going to happen. Because this is private land. This land can be developed and will be developed eventually, one way or another. At least this puts together a scope that looks far enough ahead to make it all compatible, at least within itself. Now, whether or not the community wants to go that way, that's another thing too. Because I think Bill was very right. I think that there are a lot of people that would just like to see it kind of bruise line at the current rate. But some things you don't have control over. That's one of them. And so, I think you have to take that into consideration when you do look at something like this. So, I, I, I think that, I, I don't think it's wrong to do a master plan like that. I think it's a good idea whether we eventually go that way or not. At least it's something together, it's something somebody can look at and see a, a way that it's possible to be developed and maybe perhaps have some control over in the fact that they're listening to ideas from outside at this particular point in time anyway.
The, the concepts that are, are built into that plan, they demonstrate the concepts. You know, will it change a little? Will it change a lot? Maybe. But the concepts are the things that, that we need to mutually embrace, you know? Village Green, meeting house, transportation center, both, you know, a, a ground transportation center. You know, if there is an aerial transportation connection to the mountain, where does that work? How, you know, the pedestrian connectivity? All of those, all of those issues that John talked about that were essential in a successful community that are built into that, those are exactly right. And, you know, that plan tried to embrace those things, taken them from the master plan. But certainly finding out if everybody, or if enough people agree with that so that we can move ahead with some planning collectively is important.
I have, I have a question that is really for Bill and Bill and Mark. And that is, can, can you together, I guess it would be together, come up with some of those broad, broad scope numbers of, of what Nancy's asking for? You know, so we don't have to have the detail yet of the consultant, but, but we can have some idea of the economics of the whole project. Is that possible to do for the planning board?
And for town meeting?
And, well, certainly for town meeting, yeah. But, you know, I mean, because the consultant thing may not happen before town meeting. So, if it doesn't, I think that, you know, I think Nancy's point of, of having some of those numbers, I think is important. I mean, I think it would be good for us to have that. And if, if the heads could get together and, and come up with some of those numbers, even if they aren't, you know, right on exact, I mean, it, it, you know, at least it gives us a ballpark.
Right, right.
You know, it gives everybody a ballpark.
If Bill's, you know, Bill's okay with it, I mean, we can bring the assessor in, we can look at the master plan and, and we can get a general idea. And then, and he can also, he can also, by going to other communities and say, "If you do this, you know, you might be able to anticipate these kinds of changes in the other properties." You know, I, he can give us a sense of that.
That would be great. Because I think that's what a lot of people are gonna be worrying about.
That's, it can affect my house. It's gonna affect my kind of, that, that's what people are gonna be thinking.
And, you know, we can... We can sit down with Jim and, and Chris and we can say, "Okay, public safety, public works." You know, generally what's gonna be the impact? What, you know, what additional services are we gonna have to provide that we can't currently provide? You know, I, I looked at the master plan and, and I don't see many new public roads. That's a good thing. It's in the area where we have the maximum water and sewer pieces of the distribution system. So, connecting into that, we have to look at whether or not we have sufficient water capacity, sufficient wastewater capacity. They've already done some of that. You know, so we can, we can answer those questions. And maybe the planning board takes the C1 zone as it's divi, defined in the zoning ordinance, go down it and, and look at the master plan and say, "Does it meet what the town has envisioned for the core?" Because we, we zoned that C1 for a reason. We wanted certain types of development to occur there. You know, and evaluate it based on what the zone is and whether or not, you know, there's something missing or there's, you know, or it meets the zone.
The law don't own the zone, but the master plan.
Oh, and the master plan, absolutely, absolutely. But the, but the zone was developed, looking back at the master plan, where we wanted dense commercial and, and high-population center, right? I mean, that, it should match the master plan. And then you can go to town meeting and say, you know, "Don't, don't look at the buildings or where the trees are or whatever. This plan either does or does not match what our zoning ordinance says. And we should either support it or change the master plan or, or change the, or zoning ordinance to fit it, if that's what you want to do."
One of the impacts you want to look at too is of the new upscale hotel type of situation and how that affects existing properties that ha, are heavy into rentals, such as Black Bear or Golden Eagle, where you have condominium ownership. But it's not just a condo. There's also a, a, a heavy rental interest in that and how it would affect those properties, which likely are getting a little shabby. And, you know, are they gonna be put out of business? Or is there gonna be real distress on the values of those?
They're gonna step up to the plate and do better.
Or are they gonna step up to the plate? Exactly.
They're, they're under distress now.
Yes, yeah, they are.
You know, I mean, you know, that, you know, that, when things are declining, they're gonna continue to decline unless you take some steps to change them. And yeah, will there be people hurt? Absolutely. There will be people that, but that's, that's what free enterprise is all about. Well, I mean, that's, but, I mean, the hard, the hard question to answer is, what happens if you do nothing? That's a really tough one. And, and I don't know what the answer to that question is.
Does this expansion worry about the mountain not making it? Does, and my concern is monetarily, the impact that if, if the mountain didn't make it, and what impact would this master plan have for rental property? I mean, to support it in the winter months if there was nothing basically here? Also, I mean, you have to look at the flip side of it too. I mean, in the summer, you've got a lot, you're opening a lot of avenues. But let's just say if things fall apart, and hopefully, God, they're not going to, but what's gonna happen if this proposal goes through and then we've got all this wonderful stuff and nothing in the winter months to support it?
Well, but don't you, when we're bankrupt, we're running. You know, when the mountain was bankrupt, it was running. I mean, I don't think there's any bank out there that will just let us sit here and not try to renew the investment.
And don't you think, and don't you think that if, if, if anybody knew that, that this is what was happening in the town and we had this, and we had all these beds in town, we had all of this life, you know, vitality within the town, so that's gonna make the ski area... So, it, so it, it may help to bring somebody in that will have to run. You know, I mean, it, you know, there's lots of whatevs.
Oh, yeah.
Out there. And there are going to be, all the way through this process, there are going to be whatevs. You know, I just think that, you know, we as a board have to make a decision that we think that this is, that the concept is the right thing to do and that, that we want to move forward to do this for the town as opposed to, as Bill says, what happens if we do nothing?
Right, well, that's true too.
You know, I mean, do we want to sit here as a board and do nothing? You know, or do we want to, we want to help to, you know, make the town, give it more vitality?
Which might be the most effective way to sell it, is to compare the do-nothing versus the do-something.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and also with, with our RFP, that we're trying to get an outside expert in. So, we're not saying, "Okay, water company, go ahead and do what you will." But we are being proactive and working together instead of just ceding control to drive the company. So, that's support for our, our efforts from an expert, right?
Martin's been working along for 20-plus years with different owners, you know? I don't see a change. know, I don't see a change in the near place, I don't know why somebody would come in and do something.
Because they could also get control of the land in the valley. See, I, I don't believe anything will happen until you can find one investor who actually owns both these.
Well, I, that I agree with.
Right, and I, and the problem is, I'm not sure that investor, that investor, I think Bill is right, you gotta convince them that the town wants, he's gotta be convinced that the town, either it's gonna help him do it, or it's gonna be a roadblock, because if he senses the town's a roadblock, then he won't do it, it's gonna be hard enough to do it anyway. But I, I don't see them staying, I don't see anybody building these hotels or any of this stuff unless he has control over that entity as well, the mountain.
So we, you know, plan for the best case development, and that's what we do, so.
Well, yeah. Having said all this, where are we at?
Well, we need to, I, I think we need, yeah, we need to go through this RFP and make a decision about whether this is something that we wanna move forward.
I have a comment. When you, on the second page, the project goal, you start out by saying, the town is seeking to design a transportation system for the most efficient movement of transient gas property owners and residents. I think not only efficient, but perhaps pleasant movement, I mean, you can stick people on air tubes, show them up in the mountain, and that's pretty efficient, but it isn't much fun, and nor is a broken down old bus collateral one, but natural is kind of pleasant and nice walking environment and biking, so you maybe add another word there, efficient and...
Put Terry in charge of the transportation.
I know, he should've been from the get-go.
Someone has arrived. We wanted, we wanted to, the next sentence there, Terry, I mean, we wanted to get across the fact that we want them to park their car, whether they're a condo owner or a transient visitor, and then move around the valley in this transportation system, whether it was a bus, whether it was walking, whether it was biking, whether they were recreating, or whether they were going to a commercial establishment, they were using this transportation system effectively. So that's the whole goal, is to make it all tie together.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with that. I think for people who use it effectively, you'd have to have a nervy effect of system, otherwise, I mean, otherwise, and who would want...
Yeah, so you know what, we, we need in that second sense to say that they, you wanted to park their car, and, and to happily park their car, to, well, or to be happy to leave it there and walk and get around.
No, no, right, you gotta encourage, yeah, you get to encourage, yeah.
We're not gonna put a law on their car, they're gonna want some...
Yeah, because, because there's, yeah, penalties.
Yeah, right, fine them if they drive their P O V or whatever.
It's so easy, it's so much better to do it. So somehow we need to, I think we should incorporate that, because I think we're not, I wanna really convey Terry's, that, that it's pleasant that they're, and gladly, and gladly, we want them to be glad to park their cars.
In the two, you know, like, gladly.
It's probably obvious, but I think you wanna tell people who might put in a proposal that you're looking at a phased transportation system, because your system, I think you're gonna find will change over time and as the community grows, and so your proposal needs to build that in.
We say that, I think we say that at the end.
Or does it need to be more?
And see, there's a section, the last section on the third page says follow-on phases, it talks about, you know, this is the first step in a multi-phase.
Yeah, so, so I always say the town is seeking to design a phased system, make it, say it up front.
Yeah.
Bicycles, do you emphasize that in the sentence?
Did I misplace this?
Let's not forget bicycles.
Well, I, yeah, the...
Might give you some place, right?
The emphasis, if you read the first paragraph, is on being able to get people around the community via some transportation system, and I, and like Ray, I think there should also be, you know, we, we wanna create an environment that encourage, allows people to, to walk, ride bicycles, you know, and, and, you know, in addition being able to get them to where they need to go.
Well, you can say that in, in that same paragraph where you list the roads, trails, and so forth, following, the following synthesis is, connection that are relative to activities in the community or something like that.
Right, which encourages walking, bicycling, you know, and, and, and allows, you know, the movement of people via mechanized, you know, some kind of mechanized system from to another. Yeah, I would also, just a picky point, I wouldn't say bus schedules, I, I kinda say bus and/or alternate transportation systems. You're not interested in the schedule, you're interested in people, you know, what's the best way to do that? I, I'm, lighting, is lighting really a part of, do you want them to look at lighting as a part of transportation?
Who are gonna walk at night?
The, the, right now, we get, we get a lot of comments about it being very dark in certain places, and people, people don't walk because of the lighting situation, so...
At five o'clock today, you can't see if there's ice so much.
Right. And another barrier to the use of what we currently have is signage and international signage, we have a lot of guests that are coming now that, you know, may not be able to read English, or, you know, just trying to communicate to them where trails are, where bike paths, you know, use of the sidewalks, that sort of thing, just make it more internationally for the reading. But how do you do that effectively?
Series of international symbols?
Yeah, there are, and that's, that's one thing we wanted the consultant to look at, you know, how would they do that here in town? And I'm, I'm gonna work with Bill and get the names of organizations, you know, whether they're outside of New Hampshire or whatever, we're going to find companies that work with resorts and have a track record of working with ski resorts. So we may spend some money to bring those people in, but I think in the long run, it's gonna, it's gonna be beneficial to us to have that experience, rather than just go to a small engineering firm in Concord to try that. And you, and you guys can tell Bill that I said this, but, not Bill, Bill, I just wanted to tell, I, I really think that, you know, if we're going to make a commitment to being a high-end resort, or even a better resort, we've got to fund things, and we've got to come up with the funding ways, I'm not saying that, you know, it's just raise taxes, period, you know, we'll find those ultimate sources, but we've gotta make a commitment to doing that, and I think that's what the planning board needs to decide, yes, this is the direction we wanna go, and we're going to encourage the community to do that. I think that's a huge piece of what we're talking about, 'cause we can have all the pretty pictures we want, but if we don't, if we don't make the commitment to spending the money to, to starting things somehow, or going out and finding these people to do it, we're just gonna sit here and be the same.
This past summer, I had the opportunity to visit a couple of ski areas out in California, Squaw Valley and Mammoth, and they incorporated a lot of things, the underground parking, they had bike trails that went for miles, maybe something to see a real ski, huge, huge here.
They're gonna move that parking off the mountain, and, 'cause they wanna build a second village, you know, with underground parking, but I think they're trying to get the day skiers parking out of that base area, you know, they were probably gonna shuttle them out someplace.
Yeah, 'cause there were two levels of underground parking, the first level was for owners, and the second level was for guests, it was pretty nice, they would drive right in. And then I went to Mammoth, and we took the tram up to the top, and we had all these bicyclists coming up the top of this eleven thousand foot mountain, just like that, and that guy's crazy, you didn't like that.
I've been to Mammoth, it's a great, great ski area.
I guess, I guess maybe the planning board should think about inviting the mountain out and hearing what they have to say, what they see, I mean, conceivable that if they sold it to be a new owner, but it would be nice to hear what, what their thoughts are.
They'd be very responsible, right?
Yes. No, I know it, but, but in lieu of this proposal, it would be nice to hear what, what they have to say, sorry they couldn't make that workshop, and I'd like to hear from some of the businesses in town still.
Under the project goal statement, Mark, the only thing I'm, I, I know, the first sentence, we talk about their time in the community, just wanna make sure that when we use community, we use it in the broadest sense of the word, because it's gotta include, it's really time in the valley, you know, it's broader, it includes, our community is more than just the land we own on the valley floor, it's the mountain, it's, it's access to the national forest as well, is part of the greater, it's really the greater community.
Why don't we say the greater valley?
Yeah, I mean, or the valley, or greater community or something, but just as long as we don't limit it to just, how do we get people around the valley floor on a private property?
Because there's two huge outlined acreage, what, two hundred acres of...
Well, I don't worry so much about that, but a lot of people do, you know, if you're gonna build something like a transportation thing, and you wanna encourage people to move, you gotta get them into the national forest, you gotta get them up to the ski areas, you know, you gotta get them to the cross-country centers, those are not in-town center, you know, they're all out, spread out, and you gotta be able to get them around there, you know? And, you know, I've often thought that the cross-country here could be a much, much bigger operation than it is, but one of the problems is, we can't get people efficiently from the center of town to where the cross-country is, which is the north end now, you know? Can't get them up there easily, in fact, the parking lot frequently overflows there.
The town is gradually losing parking for, for hikers, the trailheads.
Same thing, yeah. Trailhead parking disappears.
They, they will park at big DTS, but when they build their campus, it's gonna be a lot less parking.
And they're gonna, and as they expand, their need for parking is gonna grow, and that's gonna push out the people who are parked, the other recreation activities.
And people used to park down at the bottom of the bridge, they were putting that river trail, and that's all posted, so it's important to get them out there somehow.
Yeah, I, I just like to say, I think Bill's right, WVR is putting together a new initiative to market to hikers, and possibly partnering with AMC on some things, and if anybody hikes, I hiked Osceola this fall, the parking lot was full, they would park down both sides of the road for a hundred yards in most directions, and then you start worrying about people who wanna go over both peaks of Osceola and really kinda need to shuttle back, certainly worth looking at in the long run, you know, do we at specific times do a shuttle to trailheads so that people can move around? Might, might be a good idea, might not, I don't know, but it'd be interesting to look at that.
I think the national forest service is gonna put a tourney facility out there 'cause it's so popular, I believe that's on their plan. Can you kind of move on the campsites out there, maybe people might move?
So, are you okay with the project timeline?
Yeah, I would.
So you'd be reviewing next month the RFPs for the committee's recommendation? And again, we're not...
I, I, I think I would give more time for the development of the RFPs, I don't think it's gonna take that long, you know, you've got the week of March 17th, there's no reason you can't decide in, in January, in February, which of these are you gonna incorporate into a presentation?
So move the interviews to January?
Well, I'm just saying, I would allow more time, if you're gonna tell somebody you're gonna give us a request or proposal in a couple of weeks, it's pretty tough, so that'd be only my, yeah, right, I'm gonna move the interviews to late January, early February. You don't have to select them by town meeting, you have to have enough to go into town meeting to talk intelligently, you can select them afterwards.
Oh, oh, yeah, and that's fine, and we, we actually said that a decision will be made after town meeting.
Right.
It's not uncommon for two weeks though to prepare a proposal, that's pretty...
Okay.
But the thing you're gonna find is, they're gonna come back to you and say, we need a bunch of base information on existing conditions and so on, you know, do you have a package of information for us with base maps, existing trails, existing roads, you know, they're gonna want a whole bunch of information to, to be able to determine what work they have.
Okay, we'll, we'll just, rather than the full, rather than the full planning board reviewing this in December, you'll review it in January, that still allows us time to, because we don't have the public hearing on the budget until the first week of February, so we still have time to develop a number and put it into the warrant, that the planning board and the selectmen are satisfied.
I, I think it's also, I, isn't it important to try to communicate to these people, what we need now is a sense of a budget number?
Right.
You know, and, and that we're going to do some, and these can be refined after the town meeting? I mean, we're not gonna hold anybody to these RFPs, we're not gonna go and, you know, I need, need to communicate that we're gonna give you a chance to bid on it probably a second time, what we need is information to be able to get a budget number at this stage, we're not gonna use this to absolutely select one proposal out of another, because there's no reason to do that until you got the money, and you could do that in April.
Right, why don't we just ask for a range, not an exact number, but a range?
That'd be better, and some idea of how you'd approach it, I would think, and that be that after approval, we'll be back to you with a request for a formal, where we'll have more detail, and we'll be able to give you more specifications.
In asking for that range, Mark, you're gonna be, you'll be dealing with someone who's gonna give you some kind of broad idea of what it might be as opposed to picking that number out of the sky.
Exactly.
What additional details are gonna come up between time and...
Well, I, I don't, I don't understand, I was just gonna ask Bill what, what we would have as additional, I...
I think, I think it's to Bill's comment, they're gonna come back with a million questions. What does the trail work, the network look now? I mean, they don't understand that you wanna move people up to Osceola, they don't understand, you know, they're gonna have to sit down and get a really good understanding, just like the people did, came in and did the work the first time, they're gonna spend days walking around town, getting a feel for what is this town, how does it function?
But we're not asking for that whole detailed proposal right now, we're asking for how much it will be.
Right, that's what I would ask, well, how much would it be?
Yeah, so we're asking...
And, and, and I'm saying, I, I think to really do an estimate, I mean, and if I read this, I would, without knowing what of the valley, I'd be scratching my, you know, what's your vision? I mean, you know, what are they thinking of, where... I mean, you know, what are they thinking of where? They don't know what's here.
Well, perhaps you should be asking for a ballpark figure or a budget number or something like that, because a request for a proposal, which is...
Right. It says that we're gonna pick the low bidder.
Yeah, and then we're gonna do it.
And that's what I'm suggesting, is at this stage, I don't think you're trying to pick the low bidder.
Yeah, we, we don't even really say that one B is our most important thing that we need. I mean, in a way it is, in a way it isn't, because if all the other stuff didn't make sense to us, then one B is irrelevant. So we do need the other information, exactly, why not? But certainly, they must understand that we can't go forward without town approval.
Well, they're gonna put town meeting in there, the final decision after town meeting, right? I like the idea of giving them additional time, because then they can do what Bill is talking about.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if they're gonna have, if they're gonna have six weeks...
We can put together a packet of information.
Right.
Give them maps, I mean, we have zoning maps, we can give them, we got trail maps, we've got, you know, we can give them all the public roads.
Because these guys aren't gonna be interested in a proposal together, it's not gonna be for any, you know, they've got a chance to...
But I think, yeah, I think for the purpose of getting, you guys call it a proposal, in my business, I'd call it an estimate. I mean, for, for thirty years, somebody gave me general...
Have you guys review those forward, who you want to engage to do the work, and the selectmen can decide if they're meeting in April, and, and we can move forward, you know, after that timeframe. So, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I don't see time, I, you see, on a project like this, time to me is, you, you, you need to agree and make sure you know what you're getting and what you're doing. That's more important than the date it gets done. This is not like the government funding's gonna get cut off and, you know?
Well, that's it, they wanna make sure we have everything for town meeting, that's our...
Well, you, you need enough to go into town meeting and say, "Look, it's not gonna exceed this amount of money." If we have concerns as to whether they can get it done in this calendar year, then we'll put it in an account that allows us to spend it beyond the end of this year.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll put it in, you know, that's just wording of the warrant article.
Right. I, I just wanted to have enough time during 2014 so that they could do meaningful, go back in 15 with something, you know, some kind of report or whatever, so that we could, we could start initiating whatever we needed to initiate in 15, whether that zoning changes or, you know, it may not be spending money, you know, it may be just modifying regulations.
Do you want them to specifically, as part of the work they do, recommend zoning changes? Or do you think that you will interpret their, their work into zoning changes?
I, I think they, I, I think these guys, as consultants who do this, will identify for us places that, hey, we recommend you do the sidewalks this way, but your zoning ordinance doesn't allow you to, you should change, maybe change A, B, and C to...
You probably don't know what your expectations are.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in other words, in the bullet list, add something.
Mark, one of the other things that I think is important is in the scope of work to be done, I think it's important that they give us an indication of what, I don't know what to call it, but what grants, you know, what, what governmental funding and/or assistance might be available for us. We don't really know this whole arena.
I left it, I left, I mentioned tips in there, but I, I did leave off other funding sources and that was in the examples.
Right, to be able to, to be able to do some of this work, right, and understanding of, of where we might get some help with funding.
Okay, yeah.
There might be some funding available for this actual study.
Yeah.
Don't tell them that, but...
Well, they don't care where the money comes from. If you're aware of grants that we might apply to help cover the cost of the study, please let us know. We'll apply for it.
I couldn't find any that covered my study.
Yeah, all right.
Do we have to give the changes, Chris?
So we'll make the changes and distribute this, probably, we'll give ourselves another week, distribute it, because we're gonna have another month on the other end, we'll adjust the timeline. But if I can get the committee together one more time, and we'll go through all these changes and make sure we've got the document that we want, then we'll send it out.
Okay.
And we'll plan on coming back in January, it's my condition, so...
Okay. We would, we'd like to thank this, this committee for all the work that they've done, this RFP, this significant amount of work. I would thank you. CIP?
Before we get on, Mr. Chairman, I think it's also important, I, I, I mean, I'm listening to everything here, but I think it's important as a planning board that we take that, in addition to transportation studies, this first step, but we take this concept and we debate it as a board and reach some consensus, whether we think this is a good idea or not a good idea. Now, that certainly doesn't have to be today, but I don't wanna sit here and read, 'cause I, you know, I don't know, I'm not gonna read what people think about it. I think we ought to try to reach some consensus whether we think this is worth pursuing or not.
The transportation board...
No, no, the idea, the concept.
The concept. I would, I would like to hear the mountains' input.
I would too, absolutely.
Can we invite them?
I really recommend, I really recommend a workshop and, and get a time and sit down and make it the only agenda item, the only thing that people think about and, and talk about, because, you know, like, right now, we're gonna go into the CIP, you guys are exhausted, but the CIP is a huge, important thing. And, you know, just this master plan and this decision that Bill is talking about, the consensus is, I think it's critical, because if you guys don't even agree, we're gonna be flailing around in the future.
If this goes to a, a, a workshop, is this gonna be like the last one, it's gonna be open to the public?
It's your meetings, if, if there's a majority, your meetings have to be public.
But it's, it seemed that not many people knew that last time around, so could we advertise it better?
We'll do it here and we'll advertise it on the website, we'll do it in...
Do you want that?
Whatever you want.
I don't know, I'm just saying, some people said to me, "Was that an open meeting?" I said, "I asked them," they said it was. It was a public meeting, it was not an open meeting, and that's why it's called a workshop. The difference in a workshop is, it is a public meeting, but the public is not allowed to participate.
Right, I understand the difference, but I'm just, then we need to advertise it as a public meeting if it's gonna be.
We did, we posted it. We posted it.
Or is the next step happening at workshop with specific people we invite, whose input we really wanna hear, versus the public?
Well, no, this, like Bill said, the public still has to be able to sit here and listen to you.
Right.
They don't, they don't have to be able to talk, but...
Right.
Okay, so it's gonna be a public meeting in that sense.
Right. Will we specifically invite anyone to come in?
Oh, yeah, you can specifically ask anyone to come in and participate in the workshop, absolutely.
I, I think you'll benefit, when you have a, a, a public meeting with input, if you, if the planning board knows where they are on this stuff first. Your opinions carry a lot of weight with the public, they respect the fact that you work on master plans, that you go work through that stuff, and knowing what your opinions and thoughts are, I think goes a long ways towards the participation that you have with the greater public.
And I think it's a two-pronged approach, I mean, one is inviting the mountain to come and listen to them, and the other is, is what we're talking about with Mark and Bill, and getting town and the town assessor, I would say, together and talking about how this, the financial impact of all of this, and I think we should be both at the same time and have that stuff together too.
Yeah, I can ask Mark neither to be here.
But that's, I think that's...
But that's a separate workshop, or, or working, kind of, I think.
You want two meetings?
That's...
Or do you want them combined?
I mean, his work needs to be done kind of offline, it's not a...
Well, he's not gonna do much in the way of calculations, he's basically gonna do what Bill just said, and he's gonna give you a sense, he's not gonna be able to tell you exact numbers, but he may be able to give you, I'll talk to him and ask him, he may be able to give you examples of other communities that, you know, a development happened in a particular place and it had this kind of impact.
I mean, if he could, yeah, if he could present that at the same time, that'd be great. But I, I just, not at the exact same time that you talk and then the mountain talks.
Right. And maybe if he feels that he doesn't have that expertise, we can find someone else to come in, he'll know someone who's...
I mean, we, I mean, Loon did this.
Yeah.
You know, Brent Woods did this, you can go up both of them, I don't know what impact the development of South Mountain had on the rest of Loon, but we, probably wouldn't be that hard to find out.
Which Burbank is the town manager.
Right.
It'll be very easy to find out. No, I'm serious, he's, you know...
So, yeah, if someone could put it together for us, it'd be interesting, I'll talk about it, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm not sure if South Mountain ever happened, but, but at least it was, yeah, some of it did, right? I mean, I think they got caught into it and...
But I, I also agree with, with both of Bills, that I think that this board, even before that workshop, needs to have some sort of a consensus about supporting this concept.
I agree.
And I think, you know, I mean, maybe it means that, you know, we each express our opinion, or, I, you know, I don't know how you wanna run that. But I, I think it's important that this board comes to some kind of consensus.
I get the impression that the big, the impressive presentation, it was generally accepted as, as what we intended, the commercial, one property zone to include, not as, no, I...
Yeah, I don't accept silence, I learned in my, early in my career, silence doesn't mean approval. And, so I would like to hear each individual's opinion.
Well, I wanna review the master plan first.
Okay.
I'm not ready to give it to you.
Our master plan?
Thanksgiving afternoon, why don't we all get together and...
Okay, I'll bring the wine.
After the turkey, we bring after...
Bring your pillows?
No, I'm just kidding.
And, and I also think that what Nancy's asking for is really, I would think, would come into play in discussing in regard to the master plan and all that. I think it all comes to sort of a, an opinion, because there are several different, I mean, several different ways to go. If you just started here today and looked at the future and all the different universes and, oh boy, they could go a thousand different ways. This is just one way, but it's put together in an idea that you can see, now whether that's the particular branch that everybody wants to go on, and whether that particular branch fits the master plan, taking into account what it does to the value of property and so forth. Maybe you have to look at that a little bit.
Can we, I think a master plan should definitely be reviewed under this light, and if, if there is contradictions in that master plan, we should look at changing the master plan.
Well, I, yeah, I think there is, because I think there is a competing vision.
Yeah.
And to me, the competing vision, I don't, and I think it's, it, it's probably no more difficult to pull off, is to get the Forest Service to agree to swap land at the base of the new, what, I don't know, whatever they call that mountain expansion going up there.
Green Peak.
So that they can develop a condo community at the base of that mountain. That's the, you know, if, if I were at the ski mountain, that would be my, that'd be my holy grail, right? If I could figure a way to pull that off, right? I don't know if that's what, you know...
You know, that, I don't know if you heard Kaufman's response to that.
Well, yeah, but he doesn't, he doesn't think that the Forest Service will swap the land, I'd like to hear the Forest Service say that. I, you know...
You know, Bill, I get, I, I get the ski in, ski out, and, and that, there with condos at the bottom, I mean, without a doubt, however, if that, if that gets developed as just that and the rest of the community is down here, I think it's still gonna have some kind of a...
The rest of the community's gonna die. We're really gonna be in trouble. That's what's gonna happen. You think your property values now are depressed, if they start building condos up at Green Peak Development because they're able to get land, your condo's really gonna depress. Think about it, right? I mean, it'd take rocket science to figure that out.
I guess if they develop the other stuff to go along with it, yeah.
Well...
But I think the conversation that should happen in the workshop, where we should get opinions and, and have some info for you guys to review.
I, I personally don't wanna see that happen, but that isn't to suggest that isn't what the mountain's thinking, I mean, I don't know what they're thinking.
Right, in a way, the assessor, I mean, we need to think about the financial implications of going along the way we are, developing the way this plan is kind of looking, or developing along those lines, what are the implications of going those three ways, and which way are we gonna be piling our efforts into?
Right.
So can we put it on the agenda for December? But let's see, I wanna hear what Bill Cameron has to say.
I'd just like to maybe ease your minds a little bit about, you know, other lodging, private facilities on the mountain. Couple of things, one, we have a lot of people come visit Waterville Valley from other resorts because they recognize, you gotta put all of this stuff in one place, and, and we've done that, you know, through planning, and, and, and that, that's really key. I've also worked with Chris Sanunu on this plan, and he recognizes the fact that we're not big enough to create two vibrant places where people wanna be. You can't create that down in the valley and then try to do it up on the mountain. Competing, competing cores like that, I don't think makes sense, and certainly the current ski area owner I know doesn't think it makes sense. You know, and, and you start talking about all of the, all of the underlying facilities and things that have to be there to make people wanna stay there, other than when a skier is open to be able to walk out and go skiing. From the, the planning work I've done and, and with the, with the scale that we're on now, I, I think the likelihood of that is very, very low. That doesn't mean someone won't show up and say, "Oh, I got a, I got a good idea, the world's full of bad ideas that you have to manage," but, you know, I, that one is, that one's a low chance of that happening. I, I think the real focus is, how do you, how do you create the community, how do you make, build vibrancy and interest and livability into the community that we've got? Can, is there a way to expand it with more Forest Service land? Maybe. Where do you do that? How do you do it? Those are all very good questions, but, and, and the study that we did, you know, we didn't look at redevelopment of, of the conference center or lodges that get all, but, because we don't own that land, we don't control that land. But in, you know, in the long run, redevelopment becomes another piece of the long-term planning puzzle that I don't think has been looked at, and probably maybe doesn't deserve to be looked at right now, but it will become an issue at some point.
So should we schedule this workshop? Or do we need to... You tell them, we'll post the, we'll contact everyone and post the...
Do we need to rehash what we all think is a board first, though? I think that'll be done for December, so we all have time to review the master plan and give our individual opinions, is that what we're talking about first? And then schedule the workshop from that?
Okay.
I think they're independent, yes.
Okay. Okay, so I think just trying to get Chris on the schedule is probably going to be enough for then.
Bill's point is, should be, should be a primary, I mean, if there's a point of agreement with the concept that I develop it. Because if we don't, then we're going to have to all work.
Yeah, because if you don't, then I'm not sure why we want to do a transportation study.
Well, exactly, and that's the thing. We're going to be telling everybody that to look at the master plan, all of these guys through the transportation RFP, we're going to be giving them the master plan and saying, you know, here's one possibility that we have to consider, because there's a transportation hub in there, there's a lot of pedestrianization impacts, there's, you know. So, if you guys don't agree with that, then you need to.
You're right. I mean, that's going to be the.
Hold the RFP.
It's the key to this whole.
Yeah.
Well, since it's not, you know, I know you're using RFP, but all we're asking for is give us some budget estimates at this stage. So, so they're going to get a chance to refine whatever product they give us.
Okay.
Right, so, so we ought to be able to do that in two steps.
Well, we'll make it a request for preliminary proposals. I mean, we're, we'll make it, we'll identify it somehow.
I don't think that that transportation proposal can be specific to that master plan because their master plan, you know, question about it. So, I think it just has to understand that there's going to be a development of a core.
Okay.
Exactly, right.
Right.
But I think that, but I think that this board needs to make the decision is, are we in agreement that we want to develop that core?
That's right.
Right, yeah. And that's where, that's what I'm necessarily.
But it doesn't have to be that specific.
That's right. No, no, no. Yeah.
Agreed, agreed.
That's a big question to answer for the transportation plan is, because if it's going to stay the way that it is, as opposed to some kind of development, that's a big difference. There's a big difference in partying, there's a, you know, it would be, change the whole way that the company is working.
Yeah, but it would be foolish to assume that it's going to stay the way it is. That's just not going to happen. That, that core is going to develop one way or another, either haphazardly or uniformly, you know.
And the transportation study or trying to raise funds for a nest of, for budget purposes, we keep talking about the core, but you're going to want the residents in some of the outlining areas to be able to, you know what I mean?
We are talking about two different things, for sure. We're deciding in the planning whether we want this core plan or whether we're going to support the core plan that Waterville County developed. And then also, we have to work on developing an overall plan, getting budgeting for an expert to come in and help us with that.
I think that goes forward.
Okay, transportation.
Yeah. And then that was, you have an opinion on that.
But number.
See, what the board's proposal would be for the next step?
To, that all discussion regarding, yeah, our, our connection with the core development, I guess. About the core development plan with respect to master. No, our, our views on it. It started, this whole conversation started because it was decided that the board should have an opinion on whether or not we're going to support this core development. I asked for a little bit of time, and now I'm saying that after a little bit of time, I think we should get together and have an opinion so that we can go to the town or.
So, are you suggesting that we, that we look at the master plan and then at our next meeting, make that?
That's probably what we think.
Make that decision? Because then is that workshop going to be after that meeting? Or is that workshop going to be before that time when the board has not made any decision about consensus? That's my question.
I don't think, I don't think that.
But we can be informed by.
Yeah, I don't think the decision would really be based on the workshop. The workshop is, maybe go on parallel with it. I think their opinion's going to be formed whether or not there is a workshop.
I'd like to, before I go on any further, I'd just like to clarify the terminology. Because when I hear master plan, I think of our master plan. I think when we refer to this, we should call it the core development plan or something other than master plan. So that we can distinguish what we're really discussing, because I think it does tie into our master plan. So, CDP, core development.
They're calling it concept plan. We use the concept. It's really the concept that we're really wanting.
But in our case, we're talking about the core. We're talking about C1 development. Let's distinguish that from our master plan. So, when we use master plan, we know we're talking about our master plan. And if, and if our master plan has to be revised or doesn't reflect our present thinking, then we should revise the, so that it does. So, what are we calling? CDP?
Which gets us back to.
Core development concept.
But for me, it's like, what do we want to do first? Do we want to have a consensus of this board? Do we want to go into the next workshop with a consensus of this board? Or do we want to pass the workshop between now and our next meeting and then come to a consensus? That's my thing, is like, which is first? Or it doesn't matter? You know, maybe, maybe it doesn't matter.
I think you, I think we could do, I think we just need a discussion and to reach some consensus, do we support the concept or not? And I think one meeting will do that. Right? The only open question is, is whether you want the mountain to participate or not in that discussion.
But on this workshop, we can invite people to the workshop and they can speak.
If you let them, yeah.
In the public meeting, in the, but the public will not be able to speak. That's correct. But I guess our invited guests will, okay, just want to clear.
Well, the public, his chairman, he always says he allows anybody to speak.
You can always open it up.
So, you can open it up, but, but you don't have to.
Right.
It's pretty hard not to let people speak.
Unless it's on the fifth hour. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, to give you an idea, when he did his presentation, it wasn't necessary because we had no outsiders. If there were outside people there, I would have stood up in the beginning and told them, look, hang on, you know, we don't want you commenting during the course of this discussion. When we get to the end of time, we'll, we'll ask for your input. But I would have encouraged them not to say anything.
That's a good approach. Okay. What do you want to do this?
I just worry that it's so hard to get a hold of Chris, especially as the year is about to open, that we should just see when we keep it going. And, and set that up and then worry about the rest later, because frankly, I don't mind listening, even if I mind whether or not our group has decided. And I probably doubt that it's going to happen before our next meeting anyways, but I think we should just set it up.
I met with Chris Sanunu yesterday. He's anxious. He wants, he regrets it, the last meeting. This is a priority for him, the concept of, I think, I think he'll find that he will make time for you. I can't speak for him, but my guess is you'll find he'll take, he'll find time for you.
Can we try to, can we try to make that workshop happen like next week?
That's Thanksgiving, is next week Thanksgiving?
No, no, we got, we got some time. I think it's okay to listen to them before we have our meeting and what it is. So, that would be.
I think, I think it's okay to meet with Chris and hear what the mountain's planning and just ask questions before we come out and conclude about how.
I think that's important. But I also think that, that, that we need to do diligence and look at the master plan and do our job and look at the master plan and figure out whether we think that this is a concept that will work with the master plan.
Right, right.
So, raise some suggestions. I, what I heard was maybe we ought to take a look, I mean, the morning of the 21st of So, that's not good?
Two weeks ago.
About the, should people try the 5th of December? No, not good.
It's appreciation day, people. It's white, it's appreciation day. Oh, kind of a shopping. I mean.
The 12th is the next regular planning board meeting, so.
I think the sooner the better. Should we look at it on Thursday? Can you do it later than that? On Thursdays.
How about Wednesday?
We got Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
I'm on Monday.
Wednesdays are no good. How about?
How about Tuesdays?
How about Tuesdays?
The 19th?
I can't do the 19th. How about 18? How about tomorrow morning?
Well, how about we, how about we talk to Chris? I think Chris is, is key that he can go.
I'd hate to see him saying yes and then us not be able to do it.
Well, the first one is to buy into the plan, right? Then we can invite Chris to the workshop.
Uh, no. No.
No, this is the workshop.
Yeah. Is the 18th too soon? Is that doing?
I can't do the 18th.
Oh, I could do, I could do afternoon.
Or like, I can't. What about December 3rd? Tuesday. Say when? December 3rd?
I can't do the 3rd. I'm away all that week. I'm a whole week. I'm sorry.
I'm going to suggest that we just try to look at the next planning board meeting. Right? And see if we can get Chris. It gives him a month to get here. It's on a Thursday. I mean, it's, most people have it on their calendars or something, or we're not going to get everybody, but. Well, we could, I don't think, you know, make sure the agenda just focuses on that.
Well, what if, what if you did a separate meeting in the afternoon or something on that?
Never.
Okay, well, you can, you can have two separate meetings in the morning if you want. But right now, we don't have.
We don't have anything on the agenda.
We don't have anything on the agenda.
All right, let's do it.
Yeah, we just continue. Please continue the, the subdivision regulation.
Give me more time.
Okay, so, so that's the meeting.
Next meeting.
All right.
Okay, CIP. Do you want to break? Is this going to be long?
I don't know, is it? CIP? Well, it's 13 pages of information. There's a lot of stuff here. It's up to Terry and Bob and Cindy. What do they want to do?
Okay.
Thank you for all your consideration. I appreciate it.
Soon as you leave, we're going to talk about.
You're going to be recording, but be careful.
No, we're shutting the mic off. Go ahead.
Oh, you want me to?
Oh, you're in charge. This is, and I, you know, I tell you often, but the capital improvement program is a function of the planning board. It's supposed to match or, or at least support the community master plan. In fact, by law, the CIP is set up as part of the master plan. So, what the planning board does is they set up the five- or six-year master plan, master CIP, and they forward that to the Board of Selectmen, who then take the first year of that and decide on the funding of each of those programs. And the board can move items back, they can take items out of the CIP, they can take things that are in future years and bring them forward. But basically, the Selectmen's function is to recommend the financing or the funding of the current year of the CIP. So, this is a planning board function, and Chris and Jim and I can answer your questions however you want to present it, Terry.
There was a CIP committee forum. The town officials, and went through the CIP to a great extent. And I think we did our due diligence to the point where we were asking questions at the extreme. At one point, we were called stupid, and that.
You had to make that public, didn't you? I apologize for that profusely.
Yes.
No, I'll, I'll fess up. It was me.
If I do make this as tight CIP as we could, but still meet the town's needs, I'm sure at this point, if I get caught in the fire of the Golden Eagle, that my soul will be floating a little bit. And I'll have my spade of parking, I mean, speeding tickets coming back. But we did come to, I think, a pretty lean CIP, but still does handle the needs of town. Keeping in mind that certain things that, I don't know, you know, you start looking at what's necessary and what is desired. This is what we kind of took a look at closely in regard to the vehicles and the proposed building improvements and so forth. And really tried to scale down as best we could, understanding that certain things that were considered mundane and as a fact, you know, just we did them back when we were young, that these days, things are different. Some things that were considered mundane and standard are now considered outrageous and hazardous, so you can't do them. So, I could develop that ourselves as well. Looking at the precise way of looking at these vehicles and when they're going to require replacement and so forth. And the details, we could be here for hours and get into more arguments, but we tried to take care of that for the board and look at it. And we ended up having Mark or asking Mark to do a, some comparisons for us with regard to what it would do to taxes. And Mark very judiciously put together a package that showed a standard $500,000 property in the valley and how the tax rate for that particular property is affected based on the CIP. That's on page 11. I don't know if it's a paper.
Yeah, it was.
And keeping in mind that the CIP takes, accounts for about only 10% of the total tax bill. We still tried to even it out as best we could, make it as smooth as best we could. There were some commitments that were already made that jack the taxes up for this coming year, and then tried to push some peaks out a little bit further. And I think we're successful in doing it to a certain extent. I'm not prepared to answer any specific questions. Those should be to Mark and then Chris, but I'm just giving you my opinion anyway, and I don't know if it stands for both Cindy and Bob, but I think we pared this down just before. I think it's a pretty lean CIP, but I think it does meet the town's needs for the next senior.
Yeah.
Well, I have, no, it's a, it's a six, it's a six-year. I have two questions or comments regarding 2014. First, this is a comment, then I'll get to my question. The, on the John Deattractor, I am not in favor of replacing the John Deattractor until the old one fails. Understand why we need to buy a new one? Just let the old one fail. Put the money in there. When it fails, when it breaks, get another one. But I don't, those things could last 20 years, 30 years. But I don't, those things could last 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, who knows?
Trade-in value, I think.
Well, at this point, it probably doesn't have any trade-in value.
The very first.
Yeah. But that's just a comment. We don't need to get bogged down. It's $19,000. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
The, now, my big question is, is the building committee agreed on the garage construction?
The building committee hasn't, and I'm on that committee, the building committee hasn't met for a couple of months now, so. It hasn't moved forward. It hasn't gone away. It just hasn't been addressed. There were issues initially, and it just kind of dropped at that point.
Well, we oughta ask the chairman to, to, I, I'd like to hear from the chair, whoever the chairman of the building committee was, and Mike, right? Do they, or do they not recommend the DPW garage?
Well, we certainly can.
Well.
You're welcome to give his opinion, but this is the CIP that the planning board had put together, and there was no opinion at the time, and so he decided with long discussion.
Well, no, we, we had, the building committee went forward with the DPW garage as the first page, as the first phase, but we did not have sufficient money to build. Had we had the money, I believe the decision, and we can get the building committee back together, but the decision was to build the garage. We just.
Part of, part of the issue.
We needed additional money, and, and that's what we identified here.
And part of that was the aesthetics, right, Mark?
There, yeah, and we, we haven't settled on the exact look of the building yet. And, and those answers are either the building committees or the board, ultimately, the Board of Selectmen, say, yes, you move forward.
This, by the way, was a discussion where we were called stupid. It had to do with the fact that the building committee got waylaid, and they get off into the details of the building, as opposed to what their charge was, and that was to determine whether or not.
We need to.
We need to do it. Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
And every time we tried to get any kind of a decision on that, it just kind of wandered off into needing more information. But the CIP is here now, and we have to deal with it. And so, looking at what was, what had been presented to the building committee, what the discussion was in the building committee, and what the halting of all progress, we determined that based on that information, that this was probably the best way to go. And we asked a lot of questions, and we were dealing with what we thought were real needs. And that's why we came up with this. Yeah, this has to do with the Public Works Department and the story that I get about they having to climb up on the plow truck when it's icy and it's hazardous and it's dangerous. And there are certain things that you just have to, as a community, understand that what was acceptable years ago wasn't acceptable today. And you've got to be keeping up with other towns, otherwise you're going to not be able to have people working for you. And I, I think it's got to be, sooner or later, you're gonna have to deal with these issues. And so, we felt that we pared it down to the issues that were the most important, and if they are not gonna be done this year, they'll be done next year or the following year. And there's been a lot of effort put into determining what is now required. I'm pretty much concerned what their, what the plan calls for is needed as opposed to desired. So I think that.
A lot of it has to do with efficiency and primarily safety.
And secondly, I think, the eight inches.
Oh, for the.
Yes. And what that refers to is that, and I thought this was a very integral part of, of why we decided to do some of the things that we didn't grow them. We're about to lose our, Chris, if you'll help me, what certification? ALS, correct?
ALS.
Yeah. Which means that we can't transport heart patients. Chris, you wanna expand on that for us?
Yeah, advanced life support, it's a separate, it's a, it's an advanced license that we get from the state for, to have an ambulance. So when we have a paramedic, where you get licenses and advanced life support ambulance. We have IV pumps, defibrillators, breathing, things like that on the ambulance. And we're required to carry a certain amount of equipment to maintain our ALS status. That equipment is, is adding to what we need for space in the ambulance, which makes it necessary to get a bigger ambulance. And when I say a bigger ambulance, it's not like a tractor trailer, but it's, it's about eight inches, the box is about eight inches longer than our current ambulance. So it's not like we're, we're looking to get this big, huge truck, but it's, to, to keep our ALS equipment and our certification, we need more room. And the, the least, the smallest one we can get is eight inches larger than the one we have.
Chris, can I ask?
And we are currently ALS, but they're adding more equipment, and it's getting tighter in there.
And isn't it a two-year, or is it in five years?
We don't necessarily lose it. That's when our license is up again, and that's when we have to have all this equipment and, and store it safely in the ambulance.
And the, the longer length, there's no longer room to pack it.
Right.
And Chris, who, who would be the ALS responder for Waterville Valley if we lost our license for that?
Probably be Plymouth, 'cause Hampton Thorne has no paramedics.
And if we lost that certification, our ambulance could only be used to, like, is somebody all right?
Basically, I mean, you still get BLS care. But it's just our interventions won't be as, wouldn't be as appropriate, or our interventions would be less than what, what we could do with any ALS.
So wouldn't be as life-saving.
Correct.
Cut to the chase.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chase, there you go. Yeah, I think this would have had support. So that's why the development of this new building, am I right, Terry?
One, one part of it.
Part of it was the fact that the way the trucks are in the house now, the ladder truck is in, then it's the ambulance. With the new criteria that's going to be coming forward would be eight inches longer, which puts the nose of that ambulance outside the garage. So, and if we freed up, which DPW, am I correct, is using presently, and move that down here, then we would have the space available to house the new ambulance within what we have at the present time, thus removing DPW down here. As far as repairs, which they do in that bay at the present time because it's heated, at least we would have that facility for the new.
That was one of the many.
Many.
Determinations for the new facility. It puts the trash truck undercover, it puts the salt trucks undercover. Gives a mechanical room to work, proper ventilation and all, all of that. It's, it's a step that's gonna have to be taken eventually, within the next several years. Why, why prolong the egg? Spread it out, try to even out the, the tax line.
My question is, and I'm back to it again, is, is the building committee approve this or not?
No.
Well, then, get the bill, I, I would just think, before we get to the selectmen, we, the building committee, I'm gonna say to Mike Aronson every time we get this, do you agree that this, you're the building committee? Have you agreed this oughta be done? And if the answer is no.
We haven't met since the summer.
Well, we'll, we'll get to Mike, and he's either gotta get you together or something. I'm not arguing whether the building is needed or not. It was their job to figure this stuff out.
I think the last thing the building committee decided was that they need it to do it.
Well, then, fine. Then he can stand up and say we should do it.
We didn't have the money, and it was like, okay, well, we can't do it this year.
Well, that's fine. But if they agree to do it, that's fine.
I don't think there was ever a vote by the committee that.
To do it.
I mean, it just kind of flowed in the discussion. We were looking at the.
All right.
And so forth, but I, I still do not think we have an opinion, a particular opinion from the building.
Okay. Well, we could get one.
Yeah, I think we could.
Good.
And based on the urgency of ALS support here in the mountain, as well as the village, I thought that was a big, big loss that we really needed to.
The, the other question I have is page six. You go to page six, and we may need Mark to do this, 'cause I always keep, I always relate back to the way I manage my own finances. I'm trying to figure out, at the end of 2014, are we going to be $4.5 million in debt or $4.5 plus $2.5 million in debt? Are we, I, I don't know whether A is in B or B is in separate. I'm just trying to figure, it's like a mortgage. What's the total outstanding debt that the town right now has? It looks like 7 million?
I think there's a table that would tell you that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I know the table on page three, there's the table, that table's wrong. The, the total debt that's on page three, that's on the left-hand side, that doesn't include new debt. That's only stuff that's already been bonded. So all of the new sewer water is not in those numbers.
That's right.
Right?
Yes.
That's why I think the chart shows the impact of, and my question is, how can it be 2.5 in one chart and 4.5 on the other chart? And I'm trying to figure out, you know what I'm asking? What's the total amount we today owe?
I think that is in the.
I think it's, I think it's 7 million.
It's the 12, no, I think it's the 1231 debt of 12, as of 1231.
Does that show the short-term debt that Bill's talking about?
Now, including the stuff that we know we're building and we're gonna convert the bonds. I, I mean, it's always this argument, we haven't converted it to bonds yet, not debt. Forget about it. The water sewer project, we are going to incur that debt. Right? And I'm guessing, and maybe we need Mark. I, I think we're about 7 million in debt right now.
But it is reflected in the tax rate, because that's, it's part of the expense, it's part of the debt service that's not part of the CIP.
Well, I mean, I always keep, our income is about $3 million a year. Hey, Mark? Page six. This is, I know, this is one of my pet peeves. What is, at the end, in 2014, what is the total amount of debt that the town will be carrying? Is it 7 million? The sum of those two lines?
2014.
2014, when we get those two peaks, 4.5 million plus 2.5? Or is it, or is the 2.5 part of the 4.5?
The 2 million is part of the 4.5.
Okay, so the total amount is about 4.5?
4.5.
Okay, thanks. Now, does that?
The top line.
Does that include short-term debt?
That includes the rural development debt, which is now bond anticipation notes. That includes the conversion of that into the rural development loan. And it includes the town required share for the rural development project, which is $219,000. And it includes 260 plus or minus dollars in ineligible costs that we have already spent. That included the pedestrian walkway up the hill on West Branch Road, the pedestrian bridge addition to the West Branch Bridge, some paving changes that we made that were ineligible, and some work on Birch Brook Lane, where we extended the water and sewer lines. Those were not part of the original project, so that added some ineligible costs. So those are things that we have already done that are not going to be part of the rural development loan or grant program. Okay, so, but the good news on all of that was, all of that cost was eligible to be used to get us to the 219,000. So that 480 dollars roughly, we are done with our town portion for the project. So everything else is either gonna be loan or grant that we do for the project going forward.
I'm personally okay with carrying about 4.5 million in debt. I think that number could go on the upside to about 6 million before I'd be concerned that we're borrowing too much money.
How about 5.5 million?
That's pushing it.
What, what's 5.5?
That's on page seven.
I mean, it's, as I said, I think the number that I get a little concerned is if we started to go over 6 million in total debt. That's about twice our annual budget.
Right, the, the.
And if you were just running a household, you'd, you'd think.
Yeah, the 5.5 million.
The, the 5, the 5, it's 5, it's 5,266,000 in 2014. That's with the DPW garage.
Right, right.
Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I got, again, I guess, Mark, I'd ask the question, why on one graph is it 4.5, and in the next graph, it's 5.2? I just, I keep going back. What's the total amount of money we owe? And is it, why is seven different?
Depends what projects.
Because it includes the Public Works Garage project. That's all it shows.
So we're gonna get up to about 5.2 million in debt?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
We'll get up to, if we, if we do all the CIP and everything, we're gonna get up to about 5.2 million in total debt.
That's correct.
All right.
And, and that was what Terry was talking about before I left, as far as evening out the impact, trying to even out the impact, was where we pushed the second part of the building project to 2019, so that that impact was leveled off.
Okay.
Because, Bill, like you said, we didn't wanna get up to the $6 million number.
I think we've gone over six, we're, you know, we're, I know by state standards, we're fine.
Oh, yeah, we're, yeah.
But.
No, I understand.
By conservative standards, we're maybe borrowing too much money.
Another big item was the fire truck, the ladder truck. This was always an issue. It's, it's been an issue because we don't really know quite how to deal with it. In other words, up to this point, we didn't really know. Fire truck, fire truck, and then they tested, bang, got no fire truck. That really isn't the case, I don't think. And so, we came down to the idea that these tests that are done every year on that ladder should at some particular point in time start indicating that a problem is developing. But that doesn't mean you have to throw the fire truck away and spend a million dollars all at one time. It's absolutely useless and, and no trade-in or anything like that. So what we did was, instead of anticipating when we're gonna need a new fire truck and hitting it with a million dollars, or I guess it's been reduced to $800,000, that we would allow for a certain amount of money to be put toward repairing it for a short term until we could get a fire truck. So this is what we've ended up doing, is dropping the $800,000 down to $80,000, which would account for repairs should something happen in the next year or two. And that would buy a few more years to when we have to make the, the purchase of a new truck. And I think that that helps, again, smoothing that line out and pushing it down where we don't get that feeling that we're just replacing the truck because we should be replacing the truck, but we're replacing the truck because we have to. And that being nearly a million-dollar item is, is big, it's considerable.
Yeah, and that's, that's what causes this big bump here. And, and the other key point, and I'm sorry again, I had to go take care of something. Did you talk about the second part of the building, the 2019?
Didn't dare, Bill's doing that.
I just, I just want the building, the building committee says, we recommend doing this, I'm okay with it, but.
I don't really know. Silence.
Well, they keep, they keep dodging the question. But if we're, you know, it, it raises an interesting point, which is, is we anticipate having to spend a lot of money on facilities. We need to just be careful about what we're spending money on, because I think we're gonna get to a point where, you know, we, you can't just have everything.
I agree, and the facilities don't last forever.
No, I, I fully recognize. No, I fully recognize that.
If you don't keep up with the new things that happen every year, eventually it's going to be real big.
Right.
And you're going to have a bad reputation, they're going to take care of things and so forth. So I think that taking care of this first portion of it, which aids public safety as well as public works, because it gives public safety the room they need to do minimal expansion, just to kind of keep them going. And it gives the public works what they need to take care of the town. If we're going to be looking at core development and all that kind of stuff, we're going to be prepared to stay up. And it pushes the anticipated public safety, real expansion down the road for five years, which kind of helps. And who knows what's going to happen with the next four or five years, maybe they'll push it further down the line. But I think for this year's purpose, I think it solves what I would say was the burning issues. I think we tried to get rid of the misconception of things that people wanted. I mean, we tried to deal with what was necessary and put the wants aside a little bit.
Chris, looking to the future, is the eight-inch larger truck box for the ambulance going to be insufficient three or four years down the road?
No, it shouldn't be. The ambulance replacement is 10 years, and so we visit it again in 10 years. But, I mean, how, how big are they going to, you know, you don't.
It's going to be a hospital room.
Yeah, yeah.
It is a hospital room in the back.
Yeah, it is. It's basically, it's basically an ICU.
It's basically the ICU on a truck body, so hopefully it won't get much larger, but.
But this move creates quite a bit more space for the public safety.
It gives them an extra bay.
Right.
Which is heated, which we can put a truck in. It is not the ideal setup, and that's why the second part of this, the creation of the final separation, it does not do anything to separate admin from public safety, as far as we still have the, still have people who've been arrested coming in for processing through our admin area. It doesn't address safety of our administrative areas. You know, we're not, you know, doing any of the upgrades. That's what's included in the second part of the, now, if, if the Village Green is built and we move administration out of here, that's going to totally change, you know, that could potentially change this whole plan, you know? And maybe there's a public-private partnership in a building core as part of this conceptual plan, 2019, that allows public safety to utilize this building in a different way. I, I don't know.
It's a good idea to prepare for something like that. You're not committed to it.
That's right.
In the CIP, but you're prepared and looking into the future for something, some sort of improvement in the stream. The fact that we built the public works now and that the public safety comes later is just a sign from Mike Jim that.
I think so. So do we need to get the building committee back together, Bill? Is that what you, would you?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mike Aronson, you know, what does the building committee say on this? And if he says, hey, this is fine with us, that's good enough for me. That's all, that's all I'm going to do.
Should, should he try to understand our reasoning in getting to this point?
Well, I think you need.
Someone said that he thinks they've already approved it, which is fine with me, that it was only an issue of didn't have the money last year.
Well, if the chairman of the board makes a sense, the board has got to approve this. What do you think? Do you want the building committee's authorization?
Well, I'm just looking at it as a selectman, not as a planning board.
Yeah, but I'm looking at it as planning board members.
I understand, and you don't, my comment is only as a selectman, not as a planning board member.
Well, I wasn't privy to the beginning of this, but, yeah, I mean, when Bill says they don't make sense, and test and go up with recommendations for the building, we should add that recommendation.
Well, there's no need to ask Mike. We'll get the building committee together.
That's fine with me.
Yeah. Is that all right with you guys? Is that?
I didn't, I didn't follow that.
We're going to have the building committee come together, have the, have the planning board subcommittee meet with them and say, here's.
What is it?
What is it? Is it a yes or a no? Okay. We'll do that next week. Try to get everybody together.
Then this should be tabled.
Till your December meeting, it can be.
Well, you can't make a decision.
Yeah, that's fine.
To make a contingent, fine.
What type of contingency?
And so everything else, everything else in the plan is okay, we're going to leave it the way that it is. I'm asking, I'm not.
Unless, unless somebody wants to make a discussion with the John Deere. Well, no, that's just as a selectman, I, you know, I'm not in, you know, my, my feeling about some of this old machinery is, who knows how long it lasts? We'll, we'll replace it. If it needs some maintenance, do the maintenance. Let's see if we can keep running it for a while, you know? But I don't have a problem putting the money in, because sooner or later, we'll, obviously he'll need the money to fix it, so, but don't spend it.
Reasonable, huh?
It's what we've been doing with the utility vehicle. Right.
Was that the intention, just to put something in your case, or?
That was my, that, in the back of my mind, yes. It's, once again, it's the desires and the wants, you know, or what, or reality. But reality is, and Bill brings up a good point, and, and I agree wholeheartedly, that as long as that tractor is running, we should keep it and keep it running, and do what we need to do to keep it running until it gets to the point where it's too expensive to fix, and, but we ought to have the money available to be able to.
Buy it.
Buy a new one immediately. So.
So we'll keep it on the CIP, and we push it.
Well, no, we'll have the money, we, we'll have the money.
Standing in account and drop off.
Because, remember the cash line?
Yeah.
You know, we also tried to even out the cash line throughout those years, so.
What's the primary use for that truck?
All the roadsides.
All the mowing.
All of it.
Packers field, roadside.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
That's it.
So December, we'll continue it, put it on old business for December, and have the building committee's recommendation. Okay.
Yep.
I've got to live with that for the rest of my life, and I apologize.
Yeah, no kidding.
In the budget for next year.
Just for the record, I don't recall Mark calling Terry stupid. I think it was some philosophy.
There you go. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for, it was not a personal thing, it was a philosophy. And, no, but on a serious note, there is a lot of this stuff that is risk management and risk aversion, and, you know, it is a balancing act. And we've gone, fortunately, years and not had serious accidents, but situations that we're trying to alleviate with the buildings are things where we're also trying to alleviate the risk of having, because if we own somebody for a workers' comp claim for a long time, it's going to end up costing us in the long run, too. So that's all we're trying to do. My philosophy and Terry's philosophy did not match on that day. So.
We got a privilege to throw, not just like to do a quick update on DPTHS, they came on their, junk facility, whatever they call it, they came to the selectmen yesterday and asked for an extension on their temporary approval, and the selectmen gave them a.
Six months.
Six months.
With the understanding it's the last extension, that's it.
And then if they want to keep it, they have to come to.
Planning board.
Right.
So they have till May 31st.
I wanted to ask, and we've been over this a thousand times, and I just don't remember, the parking situation on that gravel road where the tennis courts are. Is that parking or is that not parking? I can't remember. It's supposed to be four slots on the right hand, four slots on the right hand.
I don't think they've done any work on that, right?
No.
You may see it happen when they do the sidewalk.
Now, will they be able to get the occupancy for that building before they do the parking in the sidewalk? Because I mean, that was part of the whole approval.
Probably not, no.
Okay, so if they want, we need the building till next.
Yeah, because I'm not, I'm not giving occupancies until their whole site plan agreement is done.
Okay, and include the sidewalk, because then we're coming into work there. I was just going to say.
And I know they plan on, they were going to start that like, two weeks ago, and I don't know what happened, but.
Start, start what?
The sidewalks.
Oh, okay. Is there timeframes as far as paving in, in these kind of conditions? I, I have no idea.
It's up to Jim.
It's not over. If, if somebody was to build a sidewalk in town and wanted to pave it down and have us accept it, I would say no.
How do we, to.
Yeah, we roll about that, if they can't physically do it.
I would send them back to the planning board.
Because they indicated that they plan on opening their training facility and this.
Unless you tell me otherwise, I'd send them back, back to you, you folks.
Plus, the fact is, is they're not going to be able to get mixed here pretty quick anyway.
Yeah, it's going to be the selectmen, it's not the planning board. It's, it, you know, if they're not able, as far as the occupancy permit, it's really a selectman decision on how to proceed.
We, it's unfinished work. There is a provision in our planning order, it's right to require bonding, right? I, I would suggest that, if the sidewalk is a safety issue or something that has to be done, that we would ask them to bond for the remaining work. And once they produce the bond, then I don't have a problem with them, maintaining the building. Just so we make sure that the rest of the work gets done. Unless you conclude that the sidewalk is integral to the safety of the building or something, and that's a whole nother story.
How about that parking, they were going to use a hard surface, a crushed stone or something. That could be done over the winter, couldn't it? No?
I don't know, Jim, would be, it'd be.
Even it's, yeah. I mean, everything's.
With the frost and the.
Better done springtime, yeah.
I think if we had the bond that we prefer that the work be done next season.
Yeah.
We're just, it's so up and down right now, that we're not going to get a good product if they put it in there.
Well, we've been out there. Have they actually started the building?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's great.
They're trying to, they're trying to get it enclosed before heavy. Yeah, it's going to be miserable.
Can you have a privilege, give it closed?
Motion adjourned.